Good morning and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. Today is Wednesday, the 15th of November 2006, and we are here in City Council chambers, the John Farrow Council Chambers, in the third floor of City Hall. We meet here every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. in meetings open to the public and broadcast live on Channel 35, L.A. City View, our city's channel that goes through the city's cable system. We also rebroadcast in the evening, and we can be caught through our city's homepage at lacity.org, where we have live streaming video of our council proceedings and a wealth of information about city departments, elected officials, and services to improve the quality of your life here in Los Angeles. I'm Council President Eric Garcetti, and I'm joined by my colleagues right now, Councilwoman Wendy Gruel, Janice Hahn, Jose Wezar, Tom Labange, Jan Perry, Bill Rosendahl, which gives us seven members. We need three more members to constitute a quorum, or two-thirds of our 15 members. So I'd like to ask Councilmember Cardenas, Councilmember Padilla, Councilmember Parks, Councilmember Reyes, Councilmember Smith, Councilmember Weiss, and Councilmember Zine to make their way down, and we've been informed Councilmember Weston is on his way too. We also can be caught through a council phone, which is an audio service of the city, where you can call in and listen to the audio proceedings of Los Angeles City Council or any of our committee meetings, and that number is (213) 621-CITY, and you can listen to our meetings. We invite members of the public to give public testimony based on general public comment or items that have been agendized for public comment, and you can always catch our agendas to see which items are available for public comment either through the city clerk's office, through our city's homepage, or in the back of the meetings here. And we have council ambassadors who are sitting at the table in the rear to explain any of the ins and outs of the city council meetings and to help assist you with any concerns that you have. We also are available to give public comment through our Van Nuys facility, in which people, if that's closer to where they live, can come to Van Nuys and give public testimony there that we can see here via remote. I want to give a reminder that this Friday's meeting will not be here in City Council. We'll be in San Pedro at the Cabrillo Marine Aquarium, where we are being led by Janice Hahn. Our councilwoman from the 15th District will lead that meeting, and we'll be able to bring again the city council closer to the people of Los Angeles and various parts of the city where they live, on the southern end in this case. So we now have nine members. I want to thank Councilmembers Cardenas, Gruel, Hahn, Wezar, Labange, Perry, Rosendahl, and Weiss for being here. As soon as we have one more council member, we will begin the meeting. Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, if you please, call the roll.
Cardenas, Gruel, Hahn, Wezar, Labange, Padilla, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Weston, Zine, Garcetti, 12 members present, and a quorum. Ms. President.
First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Weston moves, and Mr. Smith seconds. If there's no objection, those minutes are approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Gruel moves, and Mr. Reyes seconds. If there's no objection, those two will be approved.
Ms. President, do you wish to take up public comment at this time?
Let's run through the agenda first, please.
On the regular agenda, items 1 through 7 are street lighting district items, notice for public hearing. The recommendation for council action is to continue the hearing and ordinances to December 12th.
Okay, colleagues, if there's no objection to that, we'll open those public hearings and continue the ordinances until the 12th of December. Next items, please.
Item 8 is an ordinance notice for public hearing.
Okay. We will open and close that public hearing. I do not see any cards on that. Does anybody wish to call that special? Item number 8. You want to call that special, Ms. Gruel? Receive and file, okay? We'll move to receive and file 8 then.
Thank you. Thought we'd gone.
We can open and close the roll on that, and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Number 8 is received and filed. Next items.
On item 9, the applicant consents to a continuance to November 28th.
Okay, if there's no objection, we will continue item 9 until the 28th of this month. Seeing none, so ordered. Next item.
On item 10, the applicant consents to a continuance to January 17th, 2007.
Okay, if there's no objection to that, we'll continue till January 17th, item number 10. Next items, please.
Items 11 through 24 are items for which public hearings have been held. Item 11 is a commission reappointment. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Let's hold 11 on the table since that's a commissioner confirmation. Are there specials? Ms. Gruel?
Just on 24, we just want to have a technical correction. If we could do that now, is that all right?
Go ahead.
Technical correction, it said $1.50 per day versus a dollar per day, so it should be the $1.50 per day.
Okay, we'll add that correction to that. Ms. Hahn.
Let's call item 14 special.
14 for Ms. Hahn. Any other specials, colleagues? These are, we have 12 through 24 right now. Seeing none on the balance, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
That is approved. Next items.
Items 25 through 51 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, any specials, colleagues? We have some cards that we will call special for the public. Mr. Smith.
46, 47.
46 and 47 for Mr. Smith. Other specials, colleagues? Let me check the cards that we have. I can glance at those real quick. Thank you. We will call, let's see, we have 36, 37, 45, 47 have cards, so we'll call those special for cards from the public, and the rest we will open and close the public hearings. And on the balance, if there's no other specials, let's go ahead and open the roll, Madam Clerk, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 eyes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items 52 through 57 are the closed session items. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Sure, let's go ahead and hold the closed session items on the desk. Okay, and that runs us through the agenda, is that correct?
That's correct.
Let's go ahead and, we can recess that, and if you can, we're not quite at 10:15, we're ahead of ourselves, okay? I'd like to recognize then Mr. Weiss at this time, if you're ready, Mr. Weiss, for a special presentation that we are doing on Wednesday since our San Pedro meeting. We have some special guests that have joined us, and then we will return to the agenda, and we'll take up, I believe it's item number 14 out of order. We've had a request, so we'll take that up first, just so folks in the audience know. Mr. Weiss.
Thank you very much, Mr. President and colleagues. We, as you all know, we have a long tradition in this body of giving out awards to very special people in our districts who are involved in music, and all of you have given out these awards over the years. It's my very special privilege here today to welcome an Encino resident, a fellow named Dave Grohl, along with his wife, Jordan, and his daughter Violet. And it's Violet's first trip here to City Hall, although as I'm going to ask Dave to tell you in a minute, it's actually not his first trip to City Hall. He's played here. How bizarre is that? So we're going to ask him to tell you about that in a second. But the reason that we asked Dave to come in, and why I'm so thrilled that he's here, is because he is a dedicated resident of Encino, of the community in Encino. He loves his neighborhood, and it's a neighborhood that in turn is so supportive of its kids. In a few moments, I don't know if they're here already, but we're hoping they'll be here soon, we're going to have 50 kids from Lenai Road Elementary, where they have an all-star music program, and that is exactly the sort of work that Dave has been involved with in addition to his day job. As I'm sure many of you, if not all of you, know, his day job over the past 10 or 15 years, first was with Nirvana, and for the last 10 years, he's been with Foo Fighters. And, I heard something, I heard something. And he's received worldwide acclaim for those efforts, and obviously is going to continue to receive worldwide acclaim for his efforts in music. But he's someone who is so dedicated to the community, to political causes, and I guess you got it from an early age, because my understanding is that your father was involved as a professional in government. And it, maybe it's not full circle having you here today, but it's a real honor and privilege for us to have you. So on behalf of Council District 5 and the City Council, please join me in recognizing a great Encino resident, a great Angelino, Dave Grohl.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. It's an honor to be here. I don't usually receive awards like this. Usually they're Grammys, but it's really an honor to receive something like this that's special to me. As a musician, I started playing music at an early age. My parents were both musical. There was always music around the house. My first instrument was the trombone, which didn't really take, didn't pan out for me. I moved on to guitar a little bit later, but I fell in love with music because it gave me, it opened up a window to my soul, and I really fell in love with it. And I had the opportunity to play it in school, and I had the opportunity to play it with friends in the neighborhood, and I'm thankful for that because I wouldn't be here today if it weren't for music. And it wasn't ever necessarily a career aspiration. It wasn't really a career opportunity. I grew up in Springfield, Virginia, and it's not, you know, it's not the rock and roll hotbed that is Los Angeles, but it helped me as a person. And, you know, when you're a kid, you're a clean slate. This is my daughter Violet, and at two or three months, I started singing to Violet. Now, this is, when she was two or three months old, she didn't understand shapes. She only knew shadows and sounds and little things, but I knew that I could sing to her, and she would sing back to me. So that clean slate, every kid has that clean slate. Every kid deserves music, and so to be appreciated for making music, I mean, to me, it's a huge honor, and I think that every kid deserves the opportunities that I've had, and every kid deserves all of the things that I have, that I've received through music. And when I think about the clean slate, and I think about the kids in school that have that clean slate, and, you know, I think that we should do as much as we can to give kids the opportunity to discover music, because it could change our lives for the better forever. And I hope we can, I hope we can do that. I hope I can help you do that. Give me a kid, and give me a guitar, and give me a week, and I'll give you a rock star. Thank you very much.
That's very cool.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I think it was, I can't remember. This is 1990. I was asked to come down and play drums for a local Los Angeles band called L7, and we did a benefit. I played drums for them one show. I believe it was to raise awareness for the homeless. I think we were right out on the front lawn, and I immediately recognized this place when I drove up today. So it's nice to be back.
Welcome back. Great to have you here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Weiss, and it's great to have you both here. Welcome back to City Hall. Thank you. We can return now to the agenda at hand. We've had a request even before public comment to take item number 14 out of order, and --
Also, I want to introduce the engineering firm.
Okay. And we will move to that in just one second. We have a quick introduction from Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much. I'd like to applaud some firms that are with us in the back of the chambers. They hired 55 young high school students to work in their engineering firms and architect firms throughout the city of Los Angeles, and I'd like to thank them individually. CH2M Hill, Carroyo Engineers, CDM, Dean Ryan, Dim Jim, HDR, HOK Hawk, John T., Malloy Inc., Lee &amp; Row, Mars Services Inc., MWH Americas Inc., Parsons, Brinkerhoff, Quaid &amp; Douglas, Somas, Sinanian Development, Tetra Tech Inc., URS Corporation, Veneer Construction Management, Weston Solution, and a special thanks also to Malcolm Prime, who made it today. Ladies and gentlemen, this is corporate responsibility when they take kids from all of our districts and they hire them in a professional atmosphere so that our children can start to believe that they can go to college, they can be professionals, they can be engineers. I got my first start in my first high school summer job at a VA hospital in the biomedical department that confirmed to me that I wanted to get my engineering degree, and it inspired me to continue and to become an engineer. So did two of my brothers, so congratulations, and my hat is off to all of you. The Department of Public Works has spearheaded this project. We're going to challenge you to reach the 100 mark next summer, and to thank you for this past summer, we're going to have lunch up in the Tom Bradley Room to honor all of you businesses, and thank you all for your participation and your generosity and your belief that we've got wonderful kids in the city of Los Angeles, and you welcome them to be part of your organization. God bless you, and thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cardenas. That returns us to item number 14, which was called special by Ms. Hahn. I'd like to, this time, recognize Ms. Hahn to begin our discussion.
Thank you, colleagues. Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. What's before us today are three ordinances which will greatly impact the lives of 3,500 hotel workers along the Century Corridor. Our vote today will approve ordinances which will provide a living wage for these workers. It will protect them in the event of a sale or a name change, and it will allow them to keep the tips and gratuities which customers believe they are providing to them, not to the hotel management. We have spent hours in committee discussing this. Our CLA and our city attorney has worked for months to bring us to this point today. We spent a good deal of time last week discussing this issue. Now is the time to vote on this, colleagues. And in response to some of the questions and concerns that some of you had last week, our CLA has provided us a report today, following discussions this past week with hotel management and with representatives of Lane. Our CLA has concluded that many employees earn less than the living wage. Our CLA has concluded that there should be no economic impact to the city through the passage of these ordinances, and there is no evidence that occupancy rate or the city's TOT would be impacted. I want to thank the CLA for this report, especially I want to give a shout-out to Christine Hollis, who has really worked hard through this process. Today, let us be courageous, let us be bold, let us continue our progressive agenda by responding to the needs of the workers. Let's send a message to the workers today that this city council is here for you, the city council believes in you, and this city council supports you. Working poor should be an oxymoron. Nobody who works hard should be poor in America, and it's time that we are not just ashamed of this, but that we do something about it. And let me say that we've done a lot in the city council to work with businesses. We've done a lot to improve the way businesses do business in the city of Los Angeles. We've reduced a business tax. We've made it easier for first-time businesses to work with the city. We support business improvement districts, and we work hard to improve our business corridors. Councilmember Rosendahl is taking the lead on improving the Century Corridor, from everything, from reducing crime, to improving landscaping, to looking to build a conference center along the Century Corridor. But today is the day for the workers, the people who work in this corridor, which is the gateway to Los Angeles, which is, these workers are the face of hospitality for the millions of people who come to this city as tourists. It's time that they get a fair wage, good benefits, and a safe workplace. Please, colleagues, I urge you to join me today in voting yes on these three ordinances.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Our next speaker will be Councilmember Reyes will be our next speaker.
Colleagues, I just rise to lend support, but also provide a challenge, a challenge to the departments that have a role in making this area a destination, a challenge to the planning department, to Public Works, to look at what this area can do for our community, our city, but more importantly, to uplift this location as a destination for the businesses. I stand before you as Chair of Plum and commit to you that if we could assess what opportunities exist in the public right-of-ways, in our airspace, how we can reconfigure the zoning patterns that can bring about commerce and a greater value to this place, that is the direction we should take to help not only the property owners, not only the businesses, but the workers as well. And that is our role as stewards of this city. So the challenges out there, I have seen the spirit and the energy in my colleague, Councilmember Rosendahl. I know many will want to see this as a black-and-white issue, and it's not. It's about a city and how we work together. So I stand to support my colleagues on this. I compliment you, I congratulate you. It is a bold move, but it speaks to the health of a city, not just one stakeholder over another, but the whole city. So thank you for your high vote.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Our next speaker is Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, this is a very historic and significant moment for all of us. This is an opportunity to give a basic wage, a living wage, to the people who make these hotels as great as they are. We're not looking at big bucks, folks. Nine dollars and 39 cents with health benefits, or 10 dollars and 64 cents without health benefits. I dare say none of us around the horseshoe would even be able to make it on that kind of money. But all boats rise together. When you heard my colleague Ed Reyes, who's been in the government as a staff position for many years, and now is an elected official, who is head of Plum, who has challenged the government bureaucracy in this city to take that area there and dream our wildest dreams about height and airspace, about taking space and make it work better. We as a city will commit, going forward, to make sure that we isolate that area there. I just second a motion that it is just the Century Boulevard we're talking about, and look at land use issues and think out of the box so we can make it a destination point. When Grant Cooley from the Hilton, two and a half years ago, told me we could use a conference center over there so it becomes a destination point, I immediately championed that. That is a good idea. And as Chair of Public Works, I am committed to getting the trees and getting the sidewalks and getting the alleys spiffed up. And those of us who know about our LAX relationship know that we're spending literally billions of dollars at LAX to make that infrastructure more effective, and the flow over, as I was in a hotel, the Weston Hotel, this morning, and saw airline personnel going into the personnel going into that hotel, it is a very robust area, though the wages are 20% less than other parts of the city. I strongly encourage us to support this living wage, colleagues, for the people on the Boulevard. All boats rise together. If people are making a decent living and working conditions are good, they're going to obviously produce better, and they're going to create an atmosphere with the people who come in the hotels that's a win-win. It will only be a huge morale boost for everybody. It will be a healthy income boost because we know the poverty in Lenox, in Englewood, in parts of the 11th district is related to these low wages. We're all on this together here at the council, and thank you all for listening to me, and please vote yes on this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Our next speaker is Mr. Smith. Our next speaker is Councilmember Smith.
Ladies and gentlemen, we had the city attorney here the other day in the committee answer some questions I think that really have to be restated. We are asking the city council to go in a place that we've never gone before. We're asking the city council to venture in the private sector in a way that no city has ever ventured before of this size. We're asking the city council to go and act upon no facts, no information, but just conjecture and hearsay, and I think that is the wrong way to go. The city attorney sat here the other day and was asked, unlike the other living wage ordinance this is the city passed, is there any city money involved in this? And the answer was no. We are not giving this city taxpayers money through our contractors. This is the private sector, and that is a private-sector function, not a city council function. We were asked the city attorney some questions about the operation of this. Did you ever look at an economic impact on this? The answer was no. Did you ever, did you ever take a look at the financial information provided by LA Inc. of 2,000 of the 3,500 employees? And their answer was, it was inconclusive. We asked the city attorney, did you look at the 22 paychecks provided by L.A.? And they answered, yes, we did look at it. And we asked the question, did you get anything out of that, of any substance? And the answer was no. When looked at 2,000 employees' payroll records, when looked at the 22 presented by L.A., the answer was no, we could not come up with any economic analysis to substantiate this request. I believe, ladies and gentlemen, that it is our job, it is our job to take a look at the true economic impact before we take a role like this, before we step into the private sector as we have never stepped before, and dare I say, we are not able to do because none of us have that kind of expertise. We need a genuine economic analysis of the impacts and the need. There are people that sit here and say, we are not getting a fair wage, that we are not getting our tips. We have other people sitting here saying, that is not true, that is not proven. The fact of the matter is, we have no facts. We sat here last week and changed some of our ordinances dealing with business taxes. We all stood up here and took great pats on our back about being pro-business city. We are now the pro-business L.A. City Council. And a week later, every business organization in this city sits here in opposition to this action you're doing today. How can you call yourself pro-business? And I guarantee you, if they are forced to take this thing to a ballot, it will be an ugly fight that let the entire country know there's a ballot initiative out there saying the city of L.A. talks big, but when it comes right down to it, they are not pro-business. You don't want that fight, ladies and gentlemen. We backed down from a fight a couple of years ago because it cost us $4 million instead of a lawsuit on a ballot initiative. We're going to end up doing that again today. You know, you want to sell yourselves to a bunch of people out there? We really care. We care. But the fact of the matter is, we're going to get sued, we're going to lose, we're going to be forced to a ballot, it's going to cost the taxpayer $4 million to defend this action. And for what? For an action where we have no facts, no information, and we've never, ever analyzed it. We're doing it simply on hearsay, subjecture, and the feelings in some people's hearts that is the right thing to do, and I do not discredit that for a moment. I bless you for that care and concern because I know it is genuine and honest. But let's wait, let's look at it, let's be reasonable, let's think this out, and do what we are supposed to do, protect the city's treasury and its people at the same time. There is no cost factor if we wait this out and do an economic analysis to determine what the real impacts of this are before we are herded into a decision that we will get next year. Please vote no.
Our next speaker is Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and thank you, colleagues and members of the public, both the workers and the business community that is here today. I rise in support today of these ordinances. And I've been asked by some friends in the business community how the council could expand the living wage ordinance when nine years ago, business was told by a completely different council that the living wage ordinance wouldn't be expanded, that it would only apply to businesses doing business in the city. I want to be very clear today that the action that we take here is not an expansion of the living wage ordinance. It does not amend the living wage ordinance that is in the contracts chapter of our administrative code. It is a different thing. A particular problem in our city is what we address here today, the grinding and crushing poverty in a community that should be lifted up by its massive public investment. It is not an easy public policy area. It does not sit easy on either side. Its impact may be less big, both in terms of its positive effect, but it is a brave step forward. Similarly, the fears that are out there about what sort of negative effect it have, I think, also too overplayed. But let us talk for a minute about what a living wage is and why we are here today. Living wage as a concept and as a number means the wage it would take to bring a full-time worker just up to the federal poverty level. Let that sink in for a second. It's just to raise somebody up to what the federal poverty level is. In leadership, we talk a lot around here, but we also know the most important thing to do is we listen. As councilmembers, we meet constantly with community members and constituents, and we listen. Our decision in support of this, for many of us today, is not based just on good feelings and emotion. It's based on listening to workers and the lives that they lead right now in the city of Los Angeles under a federal poverty level or near a federal poverty level. The cost that that means to all of us when we have to pay the additional costs in healthcare, in benefits, the social cost to our society when we have that sort of crushing poverty. We won't single-handedly solve that today here, but we do have to sometimes be asked where we are and what stand we will take. We've been told numerous times about what the limits of what government can do. And by speaking of the living wage and what a humble goal in many ways it is, we should be beginning to speak not about how circumscribed our actions should be, but about how much greater our hopes should be here in the city and what we can achieve together. And I reiterate to my friends at the hotels that the conversation started many years ago, and I know not all the decision-makers and the owners are here from the hotels, but this council wants to be able to make this a win-win, where we add value about what Mr. Rosendahl was talking about, of a convention center, of looking at signage on your buildings in an area where you have people coming in and out of the city, things that can make this a tide that does lift up the boats that you have as well as that of the workers. And that remains on the table as an offer. Secondly, I've introduced this motion that Mr. Rosendahl mentioned as well, to address some of the fears of the business community that somehow this was going to be used without ever us being able to come back and vote on it, that says this is circumscribed to the Century Corridor. It is specifically to that area, and that's what it has there. And that was signed by a number of my colleagues as well, to reiterate what's already in there, but just to spell it out and to address those fears as well. So in conclusion, I think we can be a pro-business city and a pro-worker city. I hate the debate where we're either one or the other, because the list of what we've done for business in this city is manifold, whether it's the Alameda Corridor, billions of dollars of investment to allow the port to grow and allow Los Angeles to be a logistics center. This is billions of dollars, a much bigger chunk of the economy than what we're discussing here today. The growth of downtown and the fight against the NIMBYism of 30 years that said the city couldn't grow and expand in downtown and Hollywood and other parts of the city, of putting down a public transit infrastructure that will allow workers to be here and stay competitive, ensuring that our public school system actually trains young people in the skills that they need to fill the jobs that business needs here in the city. We've got too much to do together to allow this to split us apart. I respect people who disagree with this, but today this is the right step forward. It's the right step forward for our city, and in two years or whatever, we will assess where we have been. But I know that we will come back and we will say that in the lives of those people that we have been hearing and listening to, it is not just anecdotal data, it is the real lives of flesh and blood, people who live here and are the working class of this city. We ask ourselves, where has the middle class of Los Angeles gone? Today, we can bring it back. Thank you.
Mr. Weisar.
I think that was very well said by our council president, Mr. Garcetti, and I know we've had a lot of discussion on this, so I won't belabor the point, but I'm glad we took this item fairly early. I have a very important appointment later on today at 1:15 up the street on Hill Street at the courthouse. I'll have to show up because I was arrested at a civil disobedience supporting the hotel workers a few weeks ago. As a relatively new council member, I asked myself, did I want to put myself in that position? Do I want to risk my bar card as a member of the bar of the state of California? But you know, I grew up in a neighborhood where we did have to wonder if we had access to doctors, had to wonder if my parents were going to have enough money to put food on our table. And I told myself, I'm in a great position. I've been very lucky. I had people in my life who cared about me, nonprofits, teachers, who gave me the opportunity to be in the position I am today. And I'm proud to stand up and be a voice for people, hard-working hotel workers who often do not have that voice. Estamos con ustedes compañeros. This is something that we need to continue to work together with the business community and the hotels in that area. But let me tell you, we're just bringing this up to the federal level of what's considered reasonable. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Parks. Mr. Parks is our next speaker. And after Mr. Parks, Mr. Zine, and then Mr. Padilla will be the next speakers after that. Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, like Mr. Smith, sat through a committee meeting a couple of days ago where the city attorney came in and briefed us, and I also have some concerns. As I mentioned at the last meeting, this is the first time I'm aware of, after months and months of discussion, that we have this item that did not go through housing where the previous ordinance went through. And when we sat in the meeting and listened to the CLA's account of what information they had that was dealing with economic impact, they said it was on both sides, they found it was meaningless. We also found out that our own ordinance dealing with worker retention on grocery stores is in litigation. We're also aware of the case up north where they're dealing with issues such as these ordinances that was voted in by the public up north is in litigation. We're also aware that we were told very directly by the businesses that are impacted by these three ordinances that they have two intents. One is to sue the city of L.A., and two, their second option is to go for a referendum. Those are the kinds of things that I think are important for us all to consider as we move forward and decide how we're going to vote on this. In my judgment, it appears that this is premature, that it has not been vetted as thoroughly as I'd like to see it. Yes, we might be helping a handful of employees, but we might be doing something that's detrimental to the economic well-being of the city of L.A. Although the city of L.A.'s tax base does not pay into the airport, the fees that are charged for landing is what those resources that cause the airport to be run. But I think if we take the same tack of creating a rational basis for these ordinances, we can go through that same area and find out many, many jobs do not reach the salary level that we're pleased with, and then what is the next step as we go down that slippery road? And so I'm saying very similar issues with Mr. Smith, that I'm not going to support it because I think it's premature. I think it's something that does not enhance the well-being of the city's economics, and it will probably, in the long run, cost us more money to defend ourselves irrespective of the outcome of the lawsuit as it relates to how we are going to manage the city's treasury. And so it's something that I think that I would hope we take a step back and take a deep breath and realize that sometimes the emotion of the situation is such that it drives us in a direction that we may not want to be in three or four years from now. So I would hope that we would reflect on it, realize that there are many people that have been involved, and certainly it's emotional. Mr. Weisar said earlier about getting arrested because he feels that strongly, but I think we also have to take a step back and realize there's 4 million people that expect us to make good decisions about their day-to-day operation and their impact on their treasury. And so I would ask that we take that step back and take a deep breath and give this chance to be vetted in a more thorough manner.
Mr. Zine is our next speaker, and then Mr. Padilla. Mr. Zine.
Thank you. The council asked that the individuals meet for a week, from last Wednesday till today night. I'd like the folks to come forward and see if that was productive in any way, shape, or form. Please hold my time. As I understand, representatives from the hotels met with representatives in the city during that period of time, and I remember commenting that someone said there was a holiday in there the Friday, but there was the weekend. How many meetings? What was conducted? Was there any success in trying to reach some agreement? And I'd also like to have representative, whoever else represented the industry, if there's anyone to join you, Mr. Miller. If they're in the audience, please come forward, or if you met by yourself.
Yeah, we've got some people representing the hotels that are, I believe, coming up.
And what about labor? I was also concerned about the labor side.
We had conversations with labor. They chose not to meet. We did meet with the hotels.
Wait a second. Did the labor refuse to meet when we asked that they take this week?
No, they did not refuse to meet. They indicated that they would be willing to meet but didn't see a particular need to meet. They were happy with the ordinances as they were drafted. We met with the hotel representatives and, again, discussed the ordinances, discussed some of their issues and findings. The hotel representatives indicated that if the council were to exempt tipped employees, that they would go back to their remaining hotels and consider supporting the ordinances rather than opposing them. We then communicated that back to L.A. And again, you know, people were certainly willing to talk, but L.A. indicated that they were not interested in considering exempting tipped workers. So there was conversation, there was dialogue back and forth, there was some proposals to move, but essentially, the employee representatives are happy with the ordinances as drafted.
I understand they're happy with the ordinance. The reason we asked for this one-week period of time was that all parties could come together and discuss various issues and hopefully come up with a solution so it wouldn't be this versus that. That apparently didn't occur, from what you're stating.
That's correct. There was no solution that was reached amongst the parties during this last week.
Because normally, when you negotiate, you negotiate, you come up with a compromise, there's the middle ground, and you walk away with some type of agreement. That did not occur.
That did not occur.
Okay. Ms. Kiefer.
I'll let Representative the Hotels speak for themselves. They've hired me as legal counsel on this. I would just point out in that meeting what was concluded, and it's in the report for the legislative analyst, is that correcting the record that there are no city funds go to LAX, entirely private-funded, so those people who made their distinction on the basis of what the city contributes, nobody, budget money goes to LAX. It's all privately funded, ultimately through the consumers who use the airport. So to the extent that somebody's trying to distinguish that from anything else, it's not distinguishable. In fact, you put more money and more energy in almost every other facility that you do in the city, at least money. The second thing that the, I think the CLA concluded in an incident report here that we discussed at that meeting, was that there is really insufficient information to determine what employees are making and what the hotels are paying. But indications are that when you include tips, which is a normal practice across America, that they pay in excess of the prevailing wage for almost all the employees, plus benefits. So the other note of whether we're dealing with poverty here was raised, and I think the CLA pointed out, I don't have information to tell you that, and therefore, I don't think you have a rational basis to make a distinction between these hotels. Frankly, that's what it comes down to. The other question is whether you can rationally distinguish hotels on one street versus the whole area around LAX, and there doesn't appear to be any basis for that distinction either.
While you're on that track, I ask a question. The Starbucks, the parking attendants, et cetera, the boutiques, et cetera, in the hotels, are they also included in this if they're on that particular site? Or is it just strictly the hotel workers excluding Starbucks or coffee shops or whatever that are on premises?
My understanding is that they are included.
Subcontracts.
So the parking attendants would be included along with the Starbucks folks, et cetera?
Yeah, that's right.
At those particular locations? Okay, continue.
I think what we pointed out in the meeting and why the tipped employees, what the offer was to take was to take out tipped employees, was that if you include tipped employees, which is a normal practice of encouraging service and so forth, the employees make more money in most cases. In many cases, they match prevailing wage, in more cases, they... Let me just finish what we talked about at the meeting.
Mr. Kiefer, are you...
Ms. Han has a point to add.
Yeah. Mr. Kiefer, with all due respect, I believe you're a paid lobbyist.
No, I'm not. I'm hired as legal counsel for this matter.
Well, you know, I just think it's inappropriate that we're getting legal advice from someone who's been hired by the hotels.
We also have the representative from the employees also.
Hold on. I can ask folks in the audience, please, to have order here. A couple of things. And it's not disrespect to anybody from the union or anybody with the hotels. We generally have non-city staff speak from the podium. That's just generally our practice, which I know you were invited up for, so it's no fault of your own.
But I think, Mr. Garcetti, we have both parties represented.
Absolutely. And both parties are here, and that's fine. And we'll continue with Mr. Zein's time with the table for any future interrogations of any sort or any future questioning. I'd ask folks to, from the council, respect our general rules, which are that we ask folks to come to the podium.
Mr. President, the reason I did this is so we could have a full hearing here.
Let this continue with Mr. Zein for now.
Thank you.
Mr. Garcetti, I'll refrain from talking about any illegal issues. I was just called up. I didn't expect to be called up here.
Well, my concern is, we held this for a week with the purpose of bringing you folks together. And that's why I'm glad that we have representatives from the employees here at the table, so we can finally decide if there is any movement, if there's anything that we can further review, discuss, iron out. That was the purpose of that week period of time. I did not know what was occurring, and that's why I brought you forward, all of the folks here. And I thank you for being here, so we can ask those questions and get some resolve to it. Mr. Kiefer.
Well, I was just simply putting forward why the proposal to exclude tipped employees was discussed was because of the information that the CLA was obtaining. We learned in that meeting that contrary to what was presented before, that there was information presented by the hotels on all the employees for six hotels, and the city and the CLA concluded that that wasn't enough information to go on, and so they couldn't report that back to you. I think that's a fair thing. We suggested they go and get all the rest of the information, because you will learn that they get more than prevailing wage right now for most of the cases. And then therefore, why would you not exclude tipped employees? And given that, all of that, we think unless you exclude tipped employees, you really don't have any basis for making a decision here.
Okay, I'd like to hear from the other side, the employee side. Thank you.
James Elendorf from Los Angeles Alliance for a New Economy. Just to speak to the tipped issue, contrary to what Mr. Kiefer said, virtually no living wage law across the country provides an exemption for tipped employees, nor does the California state minimum wage law. There are a number of reasons for that. The first one, I think, is that the intent here is to provide a floor for what workers would make, paid-for compensation by the employer, not cap a ceiling on what they should make. The second thing is that obviously, you know, there are much disputes about what tips are and are not received and are not given. It's incredibly difficult to make those determinations because they have nothing to do with the employer. They're not provided by the employer to customers, I mean, excuse me, to workers. They're provided by customers at the customer's discretion for good service. And so we believe that it does not make sense to provide some blanket exemption for tipped employees. Tipped employees deserve to make a living wage, the same as every other employee.
What about the issue with the banquet charge? When there's a charge for a banquet, what about that aspect?
Well, I mean, I think there's a separate ordinance that's before you today, is the Service Charge Reform Ordinance, which would mandate that if a hotel does have a service charge, that that service charge should go to workers. Currently, the hotels on Century Corridor have not been providing that service charge. Many of them have not been providing any of that service charge to workers.
What's the normal procedure at hotels in Los Angeles?
In most hotels in Los Angeles, there is a service charge in which a majority or all of the service charge goes to workers. It's treated effectively as a tip, because what happens with banquets is that unlike if you go into a restaurant where you have a personal interaction with a server, and you pay a bill and you leave a tip, banquets are paid for in bulk upfront, not by the people who are there. And so most hotels either have an option where guests, the person who books the event can leave a tip and sign on it what they choose, or they have a guaranteed service charge, much as a restaurant will say for parties of eight or more, you have a required tip. And in general, that money goes to workers. On the Century Corridor, it does not.
Okay. The issue of unionization, was that discussed at all, of the opportunity to have a representative body other than your group? Was unionization discussed at all during any of this process? The opportunity, the right to unionize and then to negotiate through that process?
No, it was not discussed by the city. I don't think it would be appropriate for me to broker discussions between employees and hoteliers on unionization.
Well, just the discussion itself, the opportunity, as I understand, none of these hotels are unionized. Is that correct?
That's correct. And the living wage ordinance does provide that collective bargaining agreements satisfy the ordinance.
And regarding the $10 an hour, I don't know how we're going to get a middle-class in society in Los Angeles with the cost of residence. 800-square-foot loft downtown is $1,600 for an 800-square-foot loft. At $10 an hour, you're not going to be able to be a middle class. That's a far cry from a middle class of society at $10 an hour. So I want to also bring that into the focus. The issue of the compensation package, the hotels are saying they're paying one issue, the workers are saying another issue. Did that ever come up during this week and come up with some kind of a real number? Or is it all over the board?
Well, I wouldn't say it's all over the board. And I think in the report, we indicate that it is clear from the information that we've received, that if you don't include gratuity, tips and service charges, there are many employees who do not make a living wage. It would appear from the information we got from both the hotels and the pay stubs, that there are service charge distributions to employees, and in many cases, they may make more than living wage. As I indicate, however, the discussion may be moot unless the council would want to amend the ordinance to exempt tipped employees. The city's ordinance does not. There are restaurant employees, for example, on Old Vera Street, who the tipped employees are not exempt. So that has not been your practice. There is not a precedent for that. That is, that was an option or a proposal that the hoteliers brought up in the discussions.
I just have one more close. There's three ordinances here, correct?
Correct.
And all three were discussed during this week period of time, and no solutions were met?
The focus was on the living wage ordinance. The hoteliers did indicate that with the elimination of tipped employees, they would talk to the others and consider supporting all three ordinances.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Zein.
Ms. Han, my name is Cindy Bolton. I'd like to make a comment.
I'm sorry. Just hold on one second. If I can respectfully ask at the end of Mr. Zein's time, his time is actually up right now. If I can just have you guys, I think we benefit from Mr. Kiefer yourself and Mr. Elendorf being here. If you can just sit in the front row, and then council members can call you to the lectern to answer any questions, that would be the most appropriate way to do it. So if I could, we'll make space for you in the front row to make sure that you're here.
Mr. President, Lady never spoke. We could hear for a moment?
On that question, yes, please.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate that. It's really interesting today that we're having this conversation. And I know that James sits here, and he says he represents the people. And in many ways, I've sat now through several of these meetings, and I've listened. When we come here to the table, as far as hotels, we keep talking about hotels. The hotels comprise of people. And I may sit here as a general manager, but I represent my 270 associates at that hotel, as well as every other general manager that represents their brand and their hotel. You know, we're in the people business, and this is about people. And at the point that we were asked to provide survey information to the CLA's office, at that point in time, six brands were represented in that survey, and we had a third-party entity, HR Consulting, compile the information so that it couldn't be skewed. And at that point in time, when we submitted it, it represented 2,371 associates. Overall averages in each position, 69 positions were represented. And at that point in time, that information was submitted to the CLA's office. There are 3,500 associates that we represent, quite honestly, and their voice. And at that point in time, that's over 68% of the associates at the LAX area were reflected in this survey. In those 69 positions, only five of them, if you take out tipped positions, fall below the living wage.
Thank you. If I can ask you to please come to the front row now. And our next speaker is Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a sense, colleagues, that we're still at the beginning of a long conversation debate today, but I wanted to rise in support as well of the ordinances before us. And I know that there's three main areas. There's three areas that we're talking about. The living wage component of what's before us today, the retention ordinance of what's before us today, and the gratuity component of what's before us today. So let me just say a couple of things. First of all, you know, when we all ran for office, we ran for multiple reasons. Yes, we get to sometimes have fun with stop signs and potholes and streetlights and those sorts of things. But more importantly, more globally, you know, we ran because we want to help improve people's quality of life. And we read the articles too about the unreachable housing costs in Los Angeles today. We read the articles too about the escalating healthcare costs in our country today. And we're very aware of this big gap, an increasing gap between the rich and poor in Los Angeles. And we ran for office to do something about it. And here we have today, an opportunity that our attorneys tell us is a lawful way to help do something about it. And I think we're compelled to do something about it. And so I'm going to support these ordinances today for the very working families that are going to benefit. The retention ordinance itself, you know, the workers at these hotels aren't just in the hospitality and the cleanup side of things, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but they handle food too. And you'll recall the grocery worker retention ordinance that we had come through the council last year. It was for the health and safety considerations of the people of Los Angeles and the visitors to Los Angeles that we passed that ordinance. And it's now in effect, and it helps supermarket employees under a change of ownership. And so it's only natural to apply that same logic, that same concern, to this situation. And the third part about the gratuities, I'm glad we're talking about it and hammering out, because to me, that's just a fundamental fairness issue. Those employees who work the hardest and work the best in terms of a service delivery standpoint ought to be rewarded through the gratuities that they help. But from a global perspective, to wrap it all up and put a nice big bow on it, we've heard way too much in the last couple of years about, not all, but some corporations in America, from Anron to Adelphia to others. We've heard far too much nationwide about entities that put shareholder profits above what's right by their employees and Americans across the board. That's why, that was one of the primary reasons why I think we saw such a shift at the national level last Tuesday in Washington, D.C. Americans, and I know Angelenos are sick of the greed, they're sick of the abuse, they're sick of some corporations, not all. Some corporations is going way too far. And I think that's one of the dynamics at play here today. You have hard-working Angelenos making these hotels, making the hospitality industry in Los Angeles very, very profitable. And today, I'm going to see this city council stand up on behalf of those employees to make sure that the very workers who make those facilities and industry profitable partake in that success. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Mr. Parks. For a second time, Mr. Parks will be our next speaker. And then after Mr. Parks will be Ms. Han. Mr. Parks?
I just have one question for the representatives that were at the table, Mr. Kiefer, and I believe also from the workers. On the first paragraph of the ordinance, it says, comments on the LAX hotels being the highest occupancy. I'm just wondering, is that an accurate statement? Because it's used as the...
If both of you could use the podium, please?
Oh, podium. Are the rational basis...
So the question is, do they have the highest occupancy in the city?
The statement is, in particular, the hotels in LAX area enjoy the highest occupancy rate of all Los Angeles hotels due to their proximity to LAX.
The most recent numbers that I've seen from both Smith Travel Research and PKF, which are the two respected analysts that track these things, yes, they do have the highest occupancy. Obviously, that fluctuates, but traditionally, the LAX hotels have been at the top of the occupancy for Los Angeles area, yes.
The, I think that it could be, I would like Cindy to correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's generally correct that they are among the highest occupancy, but it's partly, they're also the highest paying as a percentage of room rates of any of the hotels in the entire county. In other words, the highest percentage of their wages, a percentage of room rates, Council Rosendale, go to wages higher than any other place in the city and the county. Important reason for why we're saying that, why you have no race basis for distinguishing these 12 hotels from any other hotels around the airport or any hotels in the city. So you might as well just adopt the living wage for the entire city, because that's really, there's no distinction.
Jerry, let me ask you, I believe you were here when the first living wage ordinance came through. What was the rationale for maintaining it only on city contracts?
Well, my recollection, well, how do I answer that question? My recollection is that the proposal was that it applied to city contracts.
Okay. I mean, but what was the rationale? What's the debate and why was it relegated to that narrow aspect?
The debate centered around the fact that public money was being used to, public money was being used, in essence. And contractors were making money through contracts with the city of Los Angeles. So the council at the time made a policy decision that those contracts, that employees working in those contracts should be paid a living wage rather than a minimum wage.
Okay. And what was the depth of the economic impact on that initial, these initial ordinances?
I don't recall the numbers.
Not the numbers, but was there an in-depth economic impact review?
Well, it was a, I would say, a worst-case scenario, as I recall. The council was presented with information that assuming employees were making minimum wage, the hourly increase to the living wage would represent, you know, X dollars, whatever it was at that time. And information was presented that if you pass these ordinances, you could experience, you know, increases in contract costs by this amount of money. And the council, as a matter of policy, determined that expenditure of those funds to further the goal of increasing wages was worthwhile.
Okay. And then at the recent Budget and Finance Committee closed session, we made aware that there was something called a Blue Ribbon Committee that had studied this issue, but yet it had not been evaluated as part of the city's response. I'm just wondering whether there was a rationale for that.
There were several studies that have been done, some of which have been referred to, you know, relative to the wage of the employees, for example. One, I believe, was done through LA Inc., which indicated that the average wages in this area was somewhat, was slightly below the county average. I think the figure was 20% below downtown hotel workers. There was another report prepared by the Century Corridor Commission on Jobs, Tourism. I don't know that that report was ever officially submitted to the city or heard by the council. The executive summary of that made a variety of recommendations, including extension of the living wage to this area. It also included recommendations to ensure that the service charges were distributed to the employees. It dealt with the issue of the mini-conference center out there. So it dealt with a lot of the issues that have been before the council in a wide variety of areas.
Okay. Someone called me this morning, just to verify, when we've gone through this issue for this ordinance, has ongoing labor negotiation been put on hold waiting for this ordinance?
That I don't know. I think that's something you'd have to direct to the hoteliers and the employee representatives.
George, if you know that, or the hotel representative?
Your question is, was there ongoing negotiations that have been on hold as a result of these discussions?
That we were advised that there were ongoing negotiations put on hold.
No, that is not the case. There have not been such discussions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Mr. Reyes is our next speaker.
Thank you, Council President. You know, colleagues, I do respect the fiscal austerity and discipline I'm hearing from Congressman Parks, Congressman Smith. It's what we should be doing. But I also know that we spend millions and millions of dollars when we're fighting crime. We spent millions and millions of dollars in dealing with the gang issue, on cameras, on all the things we do as a city to carry the big stick, to put people in their place, when many times, the alternative is to provide jobs, to provide the resources so that the parents can take care of their kids, provide the resources so that there is an apartment or a house where they can live. It's not a figment of our imagination. Workers are making $6 and change an hour. That really is happening. Rents are costing $1,400 a month. There are parents working two or three jobs... There are parents working two or three jobs who are not taking care of their kids. So we wonder why we have such a high dropout rate? Who's watching them with their homework? Who's making sure they're being fed? And it starts right here, right now, with a fundamental base salary. That's all we're asking. So we talk about all of these numbers and our fiscal responsibility with these $4 million or whatever it is, this threat, what sounds like a threat, will be in the horizon? The real question is, we as city leaders, are we looking at the big picture? Are we looking at how we are sustaining a quality of life for those workers who are waking up at 4:00 or 5:00 in the morning, catching the bus at a dirty bus stop, in a smelly bus, traveling two or three hours, get to work, come back at 6:00, 8:00 PM, sore feet, sore backs, and get up the next day in the same grind? Wondering how their children are doing? Wondering if they're safe? Wondering if the childcare they have is the childcare that's going to keep their kids healthy? These are the burdens of the working poor. And this is the nature of our city. Unless we take the steps to think comprehensively, to look at all of our discretionary powers that include ordinances like this, that include changing the fiscal environment, changing the urban scape, and creating new relationships from those people who are making money off the backs of these workers. We need to share the resources and provide an environment where we all benefit as a city of the future. This is an international city. All eyes are on us. And we need to show our best posture in creating a balance between those who choose, who choose to look at the workers as if they are invisible. And that is wrong. I trust the collective decision of this body. I trust with all of the security measures, ordinances, containment, the language that's before us. I thank my colleagues to make sure that we take this incrementally, that we're careful, and that we are responsible with the stewardship of handling our fiscal responsibilities. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Our final speaker is Councilwoman Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say quickly, I want to thank the mayor, who is supporting us in this bold step which we are about to take. And it's time that we take the vote.
Thank you very much. That is the last speaker on the queue. We now have three ordinances that are before us. Mr. Clerk, if you'll just reiterate what it is we're voting on, as well as the amendment, the friendly amendment, that if there's no objection to, will be accepted.
Yeah, does council wish to take that as a separate vote?
No, if it's, if there's no objection, we'll accept that as a friendly amendment.
And what's before council is the three ordinances as recommended by the Trade, Commerce, and Tourism Committee.
Okay. All right, colleagues, we can now open the roll on the matter. It's the three ordinances, and then there's been one amendment that was accepted as a friendly amendment, reiterating, reiterating the prescription that this is Century Corridor solely. If anybody would like us to split them, we can. Okay, Mr. Zine moves to split the three ordinances. If there's no objection, okay. We'll take three votes if there's no objection to that. All right, Mr. Clerk, first one?
The first ordinance is to amend Chapter 18 of the LEMC, adding Article 2 to Chapter 18 of the LEMC to require LAX-area hotels to pay certain hotel service workers a living wage.
Okay. First one is the living wage section of the three ordinances today. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes, 3 noes.
That will go to a second reading under our council rules. If I can ask folks to, we still have two weeks, two votes to make for our audience members and members who are viewing from home. Excuse me, folks. If I can ask people to please wait one moment? Wait one moment? This does not pass today. Under our city rules, if there is an ordinance before us that requires 12 votes or more, and it has to be unanimous on the first reading. If it is not, it goes to a second reading, which is one week later, so next Wednesday. And then it requires a simple majority, and it does not require a unanimous vote, obviously. So that will be carried over one week. Our next ordinance, please.
The second ordinance is to require LAX-area hotels to provide transitional worker retention when these establishments change control.
Okay. Let's please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes, 1 no.
Okay. That will go over one week as well. The third one?
The third ordinance is to require the LAX-area hotels to pass along service charges to those hotel service workers who render the services for which the charges are collected.
Okay. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes, 1 no.
That will carry over one week as well. That, if I can ask folks? We will have this scheduled next Wednesday. Next Wednesday, we will have this scheduled here again in council for a final reading. If I can ask folks then to...
Mr. President, there is one more vote to vote on the amendment.
Okay. That was, I thought that was accepted as friendly, but if we'll vote on that separately. This is again to the amendment, which specifies again, as is in the ordinance, that this is applied to the Century Corridor hotels specifically. Can please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That passes. All right. Thank you all very much. Appreciate everybody being here, and we'll see you next week. Now go back to... If I can ask folks to please... If I can ask folks to make their way for celebrations outside. We have room outside to express yourselves. And we will take up the confirmation of Madeline Janis at this time to the CRA board, if she'd like to come forward. Commissioner Janis, if you'd like to come forward to the table. Thank you. I'd like to recognize the Chair of our Housing, Community, and Economic Development Committee, Chairman Herb Wesson, to begin our confirmation hearing.
Thank you, Mr. President, members.
Hold on one second. I'm sorry, Mr. Wesson. Why don't we wait one second? If I could ask folks in the chambers, if we can either keep our conversations inside the chambers to a minimum very respectfully, or ask folks to cheer, to clear the room so that we can continue with this confirmation and make sure that folks can be heard. Thank you all very much for your understanding and exiting the chambers as quickly as possible if you're continuing conversations. Thank you. If I can ask audience members who are staying here to please take their seats, and the rest of our guests to clear the chambers? Thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. Wesson, go ahead.
Oh, no problem. Again, thank you, Mr. President, members. The committee had an opportunity to meet with Ms. Janis yesterday. She's already, she's a veteran of this committee. She, she has even now a better feel than she had before. It was unanimous in committee that we would recommend your reappointment to the entire council, so I would urge an aye vote.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wesson. Mr. Parks?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'd just like to ask some questions. Let me get my book. One of the things I was concerned, and I think we've gotten information to the mayor's office on some of the dealings that we've had with CRA and projects within the 8th District. And one is, I want to know if you're familiar with the letter the mayor wrote in May of this year about his expectation of commissioners?
I believe it was a letter to the CEO, Cecilia Solano, and to all the commissioners, yes. I'm aware of that letter.
And some of the issues that he clarified were issues such as insistence on greater sense of urgency, focus on South LA, promote growth, be business-friendly. And he specifically mentioned about the lack of surprises for developers once they come before the commission. Are you aware of those points?
I have read that letter, yes.
Okay. On some of the actions that have come since this letter, do you think that the commission, and particularly yourself, have followed through on the issues the mayor has found significantly, significant to put in the letter?
I believe that I'm a passionate advocate of the mayor's program. And I believe that winning better jobs and community benefits is business-friendly. And that having a proactive vision for how to use the tools of redevelopment to lift up poor communities, that primarily, that's a win-win. And I think I've been a really strong advocate on behalf of many developers who I believe are really stepping up in the city. And I also can say, council member, that I personally lived for 17 years in South LA. And I have, you know, a personal passion for seeing supermarkets and retail and development happen in South LA and in East LA, frankly. And, you know, hope to continue to be a strong advocate for that.
Okay. Also, you deal with a lot of activities in the airport. Are you familiar with Mayor Hahn's three or four executive orders regarding the activities of commissioners and their relationship with vendors and on RFPs and things of that nature? And how those executive directors reflect on how commissioners can conduct themselves?
I'm familiar with those executive orders, which did not apply to the CRA, although I believe in spirit, applied to the CRA. I'm also familiar with a pledge that our current mayor has asked every commissioner to take on high ethical standards. That I've been fully trained and in many ways on the ethics ordinance, top to bottom. So I am, you know, I do believe that I have very high standards for myself.
Okay. When you say the spirit, have you looked at the issue of where it was specifically stated in those executive orders as to how commissioners having subcommittees or private meetings with vendors and how that might relate to the same activities of dealing with developers?
I recall that back then, when those executive orders were made, that we had a very detailed conversation at the Redevelopment Agency Commission, that really, the development community, because it's such a long process and it's so complex, that it's really important for commissioners to know about the deals as they're going through. So that, again, when we're voting on, you know, millions and millions of dollars of subsidies and major decisions, we're not, we're not just a plotted plan in the corner, frankly, and just, and voting, but we're actually using our judgment and our discretion and our creativity. So understanding that micromanagement of staff is not a good idea, I don't believe in that. But I do, you know, I do recall having discussions. And it's tough, because there are developers who want to explain their complex projects to commissioners, and understandably. And I frankly hate to say, no, I like to listen. So I think that the airport context, where there are contract bidders, is a little bit different than the redevelopment agency. But I do, I do believe in the spirit of that, in that commissioners should be advocating on behalf of the city, not on behalf of any personal interest. And that, I believe, has to be sacrosanct.
Okay. And then let me follow up on that, on the spirit of those issues. In dealing with that conversation, or do you think those conversations should be held within the confines of meetings with the staff of CRA as opposed to independent?
I think it's important to be, to talk about specific situations. I know the Brown Act backwards and forwards, and I am a stickler for keeping it, keeping to the letter of it, which means no conversations on any particular project, on any particular issue with more than two other commissioners. And that conversation should be actually in the public sphere. And I am probably one of the strongest advocates of agendizing controversial issues, really bringing them out for public discussion. So, you know, I do think that there are, as I mentioned before, developers who go through a lengthy process of years and years. And there are developers who, and frankly, staff members, who come to me all the time. And they want my expert advice on some area. They want my creative input in another area. And developers who just want to show the project and get a sense of, and just have a chance to explain very complicated deals. So those, those meetings, I don't feel need to be in public. That wouldn't be appropriate for that kind of meeting to be in public. But I do think that anything that has to do with commissioners talking amongst themselves needs to be public.
Okay. What about when you talked about having these meetings, developers having them with CRA staff present?
I cannot recall a single conversation that I've had with a developer where I have not first called the staff and told them that this meeting was requested, and what do they think? And is there anything I should be aware of? And if I didn't do that, that was an oversight on my part. But my intention is always to work with and support staff. And I think that in the past, we've had challenges, frankly, in the quality of staff, particularly because we haven't had a sense of mission, that the staff who are mission-driven are really the most effective. And so I think that developing a sense of mission amongst the staff, and developing leadership qualities, and developing the specific skills and capacities are really important. And that the commissioners need to be very supportive of the CEO in doing that. So I, I don't think it would be appropriate for me to be having separate dealings with developers without knowledge of staff or without involvement of staff. And I don't think that I do that.
Okay. So you think it's enough just to talk to the staff, but have the meetings privately? Which appears to be, you said you support the spirit of the executive orders, which appears to be a direct conflict with what those executive orders have asked for?
I disagree respectfully, council member. I, I have very few meetings with developers. And I'm not exactly sure what you're, what you're referring to.
All I'm saying is, in meeting with developers without staff, it appears that the spirit of the executive orders say that's not, should not occur. You're saying that you have a comfort level of talking to staff and then meeting with the developers? And I just want to see how you reconcile that.
Well, what I did mention, council members, is that way back when, when that, those executive orders were issued, and that was based on a real conflict of interest at the airport with some self-dealing. And I don't think that's ever been an allegation about me. We had a very long conversation with the mayor's office at the time and publicly in the commission, that because development deals are so complicated and so difficult to comprehend, as I'm sure you're aware, that it's not inappropriate all the time for developers to have conversations with individual commissioners so long as they're not negotiating aspects of the deal. And that, I think, would be inappropriate. And it's not something that I believe I engaged in. I would express my opinion, but mostly I listen and want to hear about the project. I want to hear about the vision of the project and want to hear about the community input and involvement.
But when you just made that comment, one of the things that developers tell us, that when you have these meetings and you express your opinion, in essence, they believe that that is not an opinion, it's a way to get it through the process. So it's more than just you have an opinion. They realize they have to take it through the board. They have to satisfy the board on those issues. And as we saw recently with Project in 8th District, when the developer didn't quite reach the standard of what the board had had these informal conversations, the project was put on hold. And so these are things that are, in your position as a commissioner, it's far more than just a suggestion when you tell a developer what you'd like to see as the process moves forward. It also is far more than when the staff finds that these suggestions were made outside of their purview and may be different than the deal that was negotiated with staff.
I understand the concern. I, I do think that you're imbuing me with way more power I, I do think that you're imbuing me with way more power than I have, but I have strong views and I know a lot about redevelopment and the details of redevelopment. And, you know, I express those views, but I don't improperly talk to other commissioners. And it's a seven-member commission and whatever I say is said in public and said, you know, in a conversation in a Brown Act notice meeting. In the particular situation I think that you're referring to, which is the University Gateway situation, I actually did not meet with the developer ahead of that meeting. In fact, the developer had called me about 10 times, leaving messages wanting to talk to me. And I assume wanting to, well, actually at one point reaching me and saying, "Don't worry, this is going to be living wage, prevailing wage. We're going to have a really great local hire program. Uh, this is going to be the kind of project you can be proud of." So that was not on my initiation by any means. And I did not speak to other, uh, commissioners ahead of time to say what I thought and what do you think and what, what are we going to do? So I felt like I was being honest in that commission meeting. And also I felt like the developer had intentionally called me in order to persuade me ahead of time. And that what he said to me was meaningful, but was not at my initiation in any way.
Well, let me just, my final statement is that I think when you say you don't think that you have that much power, it is not perceived that way in the development community when they have to bring projects through. And your suggestions are viewed far greater than just a suggestion of a person who has an interest, because they know the steps and the delays that can occur if the commission doesn't support what they're asking. And so those are the kinds of things that we hear routinely about, suggestions, meetings, discussions, and how people want to invest their money in the city, but feel that these extra surprises, as the mayor said in the letter, come about right at the most inopportune time of their investment, which then puts them somewhat over a barrel to say, "If we don't do this, we lose several weeks to months." And so therefore you're almost obligated to comply. And that's an issue that maybe you have not thought about as to the power of your suggestion, but it's not viewed as such when people, whether they initiate the call or whether you initiate the call, as it relates to their hearing what you're now recommending and believing that that is more than a suggestion.
I, council member, I hear what you're saying, and I think that last-minute surprises are, are not a good idea. Um, and I don't think that I generally do that. I believe in policy. I do want to say however, this is a public hearing, that I value strongly my reputation as a person of high integrity, um, a person that puts her personal interests, that, that my personal interests are not anywhere near the table. And that everything I believe in has to do with the benefit of the city of Los Angeles and the people who live in the city of Los Angeles. So I do, you know, if, I hope you don't believe that there's anything improper about the way I've handled myself as a commissioner, or you fear that there's anything improper that I might do as a commissioner, because I, I want to reassure you that I, I hold myself to a very high standard, and I think the mayor knows this about me as well.
Could I just have one more question?
Okay. You want to press your button again or Mr. Reyes?
Just run it out and I'm through for the day. Let me just ask one for the day, did you say? For this item.
Oh, darn.
I have two questions on other items, but just on this item. But one thing I was going to ask you that you mentioned earlier about community benefit packages. When your organization negotiates such benefit packages on projects that come to CRA, do you recuse yourself on ultimately voting on those projects?
Yes, I do. Even though I have looked at conflicts, the state law and conflicts of interest and city law and conflict of interest, and because my salary is fixed, we have no bonuses, I have no personal benefit, there's really not a technical conflict, but because there is definitely an appearance of conflict, I believe, um, and there may be an argument, I, at this point, I always exercise caution and recuse myself.
Thank you.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Madam President. I, why don't you just ask a real blunt question? And, and because of the nature of this discourse and, and I want to say this for the record, since you are the executive director of LANE. Since you've been in the CRA, do you think LANE has benefited more because of these development deals, since you've been there? Is there a way to gauge that? Because I think you're right, it's an appearance. But what's factual? Has LANE benefited more when you have projects going down the pipeline as you're dealing with CRA processes?
I think there are a couple of ways to look at this. Uh, certainly LANE has not benefited financially in any way, shape, or form. LANE has a, a policy of not accepting any funding from developers. And frankly, we, we return checks that are, that are sent by developers. Uh, we, we have not, um, you know, we've never negotiate, it's a policy that whenever we're, our staff is helping communities negotiate community benefits agreements, we never negotiate anything that benefits our own organization as a, as a policy.
Please, all my time.
And then, but I do want to say, in one sense, my being on the CRA has been a huge sacrifice for LANE. Because since I've been on the CRA, I think you yourself had asked me where I'm working these days. Um, because I am very careful about not, about respecting the spirit of the no lobbying prescription. So that has taken me basically out of commission for working on any policy matter that comes before any agency of the city of Los Angeles. And it also, it takes, I calculate about 10 hours a week of my time to properly prepare, to read all of the, um, things before me, to respond to staff requests, as well as the long meetings. And that's 10 hours of time that LANE is contributing in a, in effect, um, without any recompense. So I think that, to the contrary of what might be, what might appear, we are actually, there's actually a sacrifice.
Okay. Again, I appreciate the level of, of discourse and obviously, uh, your frankness in your, in your, in your questions, but I just want to make sure that was understood and it was out there, given the track record of how LANE has either evolved or not evolved because of the role you're playing for the city. And I want to put that out there for the record. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We now have the vote before us. Uh, Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes, one no.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. Thank you. I'd like to now acknowledge Mr. Labonge. Mr. Labonge. For a special presentation.
Sergeant, would you ask the man to either be quiet or respect the rules of the council?
Sir, we, we have rules that...
Thank you.
We have a warning of rules of decorum, sir.
I'm kind to you.
It's your first warning.
I'm kind to you. Thank you. I got it right there, sir. Okay. It's hard to believe another year has passed in a tradition that has started here many years ago, is Music Week LA. Uh, Margie Evans is here. Give her a big hand right now.
Thank you, sir.
We're going to start off here, Margie, for a few remarks, and then I'm going to call my colleagues, because Los Angeles Music Week is a tradition that we all enjoy. Please.
Thank you. President Garcetti, Tom Labonge, all council members, thank you so very much for having us once again. This is 13 years of celebration of the pioneers of music of Los Angeles, California. We've had some of our great musicians to take the final note, but before they took that note, that was Brother Joe Letcher, Janelle Hawkins, the builders of Central Avenue, they were honored here in the Los Angeles City Council chambers. For all of you who assign your staff to assist in selecting a pioneer of music, they have worked as a team, and our motto is "An instrument of unity." Thank you again. Your teams were great. Ms. Kim, head up, as well as Ms. Cabello. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
All right. Well, let's start honoring the first people here. And I'd like to ask all the honorees if they would come forward and sit right here together with us right now.
Come on in here. Come on in here. Come on up here. Here we go. We'll get it right there. Come here.
Martin Gigi, yes.
All right. Martin Gigi gets the first honoree for his contributions and sharing his talent and teaching rich multicultural heritage of music that bridges the diverse communities of Los Angeles. We congratulate you on being selected as a member honored on the Los Angeles Music Week in December 3rd through the 10th. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right, Gigi, right here. Here we go. Big, bigger hand, folks. All right. You want to say something real quick? Sure, I'll say it next time. You ready? Good job.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman. Thank you, Margie Evans. Thank you, everyone, for having us here today. It's an honor to be here. And, uh, I just want to thank all who contribute to the arts whenever they have an opportunity to. Uh, as an entertainment company here in Los Angeles, aside from obviously music and film production, we take the opportunity whenever we can to give back to the community and contribute to the arts. And I think it's important to point out that wherever these programs do exist, we need to sustain them in order to continue the tradition of a thriving community. Thanks again.
Martin, thank you very much. I appreciate it there. Now to make a presentation for the first district, Councilmember Reyes.
Thank you, Councilor Labonge. This is a family event. Martine Gigi is the brother of Anna Gigi, and I wanted to call up Ms. Elena and Ephraim Gigi, the parents. Come on up. These are very, very proud parents. Anna could not be here, so Elena and the father, Ephraim, Maestro Ephraim, are here on their behalf. And just a little bit about this amazing family. Originally from New York, Anna, the daughter, who could not be here, was classically trained in piano, flute, viola, before becoming an accomplished singer, songwriter, keyboardist, and actress. She has recorded, sung live with Ben Foxx, Chip Taylor, John Cicada, Deborah Gibson, performed as a keyboardist, vocalist with Christopher Cross, Stephen Bishop. An independent artist, and her second CD, Love Is On The Line, was released January 20th, ninth, 2006. Recent film and television acting credits include a featured bridesmaid in My Ex-Girlfriend's Wedding Reception, as well as a bridesmaid on HBO's The Sopranos. She has also, she also has a co-starring role on Lifetime Strong Medicine, a reoccurring role on General Hospital, has upcoming features played in independent feature films, and the list goes on. Born in New York City, to Argentinian parents inhales from a family of music professionals. Her father, Ephraim, is an accomplished symphony conductor, maestro. Her mother was a former operatic soprano. And her brother, Martine, as you just met, is music producer, screenwriter, and director. We are honored to have you here, Ms. Gigi, Mr. and Mrs. Gigi. Thank you so much for all the treasure and all the talent you've brought to this great world. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Yes. Thank you very much for this great honor. We are so proud to receive this honor and, uh, and very thankful to this wonderful country that gave us so much. And we will not be able to live as many years to return all the great things that this country has done for us and for our family. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
And our last one, Lincoln Heights, was just as important because of what it does for our students. Lincoln High School has nearly 3,000 students. The sad fact that this school, as large as it is, does not have a marching band. Instead, what the Tigers have is a core group of only 10 students that we honor today that exemplify that candor spirit of the Lincoln High School Tigers. These students are the Lincoln High School Drum Corps. Over the course of each year, one can see this group of kids, along with the alumni, performing at various community events beyond their own high school campus. They have performed recently, for example, at the Lincoln Heights Parade, as well as the celebration of our city's 225th birthday. They are professional and represent our community of Lincoln Heights with great honor. So I'm pleased to welcome them to City Hall this morning and recognize our leader, Mr. Michael Turner.
First of all, I'm grateful for this opportunity, and I shared this opportunity with the administration, faculty, and staff, and the community of Lincoln Heights, and Lincoln High School, and all. We should do all we can to preserve music in the schools. It enriched my life, and I do this work with the best of intentions, and that is to enrich the lives of the students at Lincoln High School, that they may become better adults through music. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner.
Lincoln Tigers can't be beat. Give Lincoln High another hand there right now. Now someone who can't be beat today is the Councilwoman of the 15th District, Janice Hahn.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Tom Labonge. I am so pleased today to, uh, present to you my honoree from the 15th, uh, council district, and that's Les Woodson. Uh, Les is an accomplished musician. He's been part of the Carson Symphony, the Rio Hondo Symphony, and the Musical Theater West. But I will tell you what made him rise to the top of all my nominations and considerations were something that he has given as a gift to San Pedro for the last five years, and it's called the Tuba Christmas. Uh, and the Tuba Christmas is this unbelievable event in San Pedro. And if you haven't experienced it, it's kind of hard to comprehend it. But basically, Les gets, uh, somewhere between 50 and 60 tuba players, um, all in one place, playing holiday music together. And it is one of the events that I now look forward to, to get me, uh, in the holiday spirit. And last year, Les even, uh, let me be a guest conductor for, I think it was Joy To The World. Uh, so that was a big thrill for me to get to conduct 60 tubas. Uh, but I just really felt like it was appropriate for me and this city to honor Les Woodson because, uh, of the fact that he's not just a great musician, but he saw an opportunity to give the gift that keeps on giving. Uh, and that's the Tuba Christmas in, in San Pedro. It's an event, again, that I think just makes everyone happy, everyone joyful. Uh, no matter what you're feeling, you can't have a bad time at Tuba Christmas. So, um, I want to invite everyone, we're doing it this year, right?
December 2nd.
December 2nd. I want to invite everyone to come down and be a part of Tuba Christmas, uh, in San Pedro. Last year, we had it down on the waterfront, our, our, same place this year, down on our newly renovated waterfront, uh, in San Pedro. Come and join us. Les, uh, you are a wonderful person, a wonderful human being, and I love it that you've, uh, used your gifts and your talents to give back to the community. And for that, I want to honor you.
Thank you.
I, I believe this honor really does belong to Tuba Christmas. It's, um, it's, it's a wonderful event. You can't even hear the words "Tuba Christmas" without smiling. It's where all the brat, low brass players get together and play holiday music. And I do invite you to come down to the waterfront on December 2nd. It's at 3 o'clock. If you don't know how to find it, just, um, just keep going until you run into water, and that's where we are. But it's, it's a wonderful event, and I have to tell you, I have to thank Janice, because she was our guest conductor last year. And after she finished, she said, "Now there's something I can put on my resume."
That's true.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Les. Congratulations. Thank you for coming down here.
Thank you very much. Ms. Hahn, congratulations. Les, Janice, we're now going to call on Wendy Grul. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm heading back down the stairs. Wendy Grul, the president.
Colleagues, I'm so glad to be here today with, um, John Balbuena, who is, uh, part of a, a unique effort in, in my district. Um, and pleased to want to, to thank him for all of his efforts, particularly taking big, big strides to create opportunities for kids throughout the San Fernando Valley. I'd also like to acknowledge two friends of his that we've worked very closely with, Hank Amigo and Robert Arnold, for giving the gift of imagination, creativity, and fun spirit to thousands of students throughout San Fernando Valley. Um, that with John's, uh, leadership and these two gentlemen, that we, they have a special love for this. And, and you may remember, uh, they came to, to City Council, we acknowledged them for, uh, the play that they did, uh, both in North Hollywood and in Canoga Park, um, at the Madrid Theater in Mr. Zine's, um, district, um, and at El Portal, and also at our Child Health and Safety Fair. You really, John, have, and with cooperation, I have a proclamation as well for Fair Avenue Elementary School. I don't know if anyone's here from the school. Um, but this school is one that takes great advantage of, of, of John and all of his efforts. Uh, but he has brought, uh, life into theater and music, um, and, and art, and made it fun for these kids, and given them hope in some families where they didn't have that kind of opportunity. Um, John has been there to step up to the plate and inspire these young people and to provide them with unique opportunities, um, in the world of music, um, and theater and art. If we only had more John Balbuenas in the city of Los Angeles. And so I'm grateful, uh, that he is working closely with my school and Fair Avenue Elementary School, and so many others across the city of Los Angeles, and like to present him with this proclamation and congratulate on him being honored during Los Angeles Music Week December 2006. If we could all give him a great round of applause.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Thank you. Say a few words.
Wendy Grul, the mayor. Thank you. I'd like to thank, uh, Councilwoman Wendy Grul for those kind words, and Councilmember Tom Labonge, and also Margie Evans of Los Angeles Music Week for certainly honoring me, but more importantly honoring music in our school.
me, but more importantly, honoring music in our schools. Music in our schools is a vitally important program that, right now, we have lots of support going. Let's keep that support going and keep making it happen. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Good job. Take a quick picture. Take a shot right there. Get that right there.
Okay, we'll get the proclamation right there. Thanks, John. Can I give you the Fair Avenue?
Oh, yes, please. I'm going right there.
You're very welcome. Now, Jose Wezar for the 14th Council District. Jose!
Thank you very much, Councilmember Labonge. Colleagues in public, it's my honor to stand here today with not only a music pioneer, but a music legend. There's a genre of rock and roll that originated and has a certain blend of music that originated and started in East Los Angeles and really shaped what rock and roll was all about throughout the country. I'm standing here with Billy Cardeiras. He grew up right near, around the corner where I grew up in Boyle Heights, not around the same time, but around the same location, right? He grew up near Gleason and Dakota Streets. When he was just a teenager, he was already sitting in on rocket, rock recording sessions with the record producer Bob Keen, including a session with Ritchie Valens. The young Billy Cardeiras was inspired to go on to develop, record, and promote other Mexican-American rock and roll bands from Los Angeles, including The Romancers, The Premiers, The Blend Dells, and The Cannibal and The Headhunters, who all became household names. He has changed the face of rock and roll, and not only in the east side, but the whole country. He was also a social activist, marching with Cesar Chavez, and he also served in the Vietnam War. He is an honorable veteran. I'm proud to stand here today with Billy Cardeiras. I don't know if he has any relation with our Councilmember Tony Cardeiras, but he is not only a music pioneer, but a music legend who changed the face of rock and roll with origins in our very own East Los Angeles Boyle Heights. Congratulations, and thank you so much for your contributions.
Thank you, Councilwoman. When I first came in, he refers to Cardeiras over there. I was going to sit there, I said, "Well, they set up a special spot for honorees." But in the past, like I was hearing today, it's a good day for me to come down here because labor issue was at hand, and I don't want to just take it into my hands. I just says, "I worked with Cesar Chavez for many years, and he was a man of labor, and I just want to thank everybody for even allowing me to come here, a guy that was born and raised in East Los Angeles, the Boyle Heights area." And thank you. That's all.
Billy, I just got to ask a quick question. You were Willie Bulling? Cannibal or Headhunters?
No, no, no. That was Sam the Sham in the Furry. He was a Mexican-American.
Tom knows his music.
I like Johnny and Santa on Sleepwalk. Where are they from? Johnny and Santa?
Johnny and Santa from LA.
LA? Johnny and Santa, yeah. New York? What high school did you go to? Oh, God, no. Good job. All right, very good there. Jose, thank you. That was very special there. Now I'd like to ask Councilmember Dennis Zine from the 3rd District, who is going to make his very special presentation at this time, as he comes all the way forward.
Thank you, Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Thank you, Mr. President, and colleagues. There's a place in the San Fernando Valley, and it's called the Madrid. But we're going to start before the Madrid. I don't know if you knew it, Denise, but we have some information, and it's all good. You were born in London, England, and that's why you have that accent. Say something. Say something, so they'll understand the accent.
Good morning.
Good morning. No, I mean, like, you know, like, what covers the engine?
The bonnet.
The bonnet. There you go. I knew that, bonnet. Instead of the hood, it's the bonnet. Okay. Came to California in the mid-'60s as a teenager, graduated from Beverly Hills High School, went on to earn a bachelor's, theater and education from Santa Cruz. Decided that teaching was not your career. You went to New York to pursue acting, and while waiting to reach that rising star, you started a jewelry business, sterling silver jewelry, and led a 22-year career as a designer and a jeweler, with your pieces included in several celebrity collections and sold all over the world in galleries and boutiques. In 1999, decided to go back to school, formalized business education, received your MBA at USC, which Mr. Greg Smith, or Mr. USC, goes to every football game there is. Denise has, and also Mr. Parks, I'm sorry, another USC fan. Denise has been the general manager of the Madrid Theater since Valley Cultural Center took over management of the venue under contract with the Department of Cultural Affairs in July 2003. Under your management, the Madrid has expanded bookings from under 60 uses per year to 290 use days in 2005. Among your accomplishments has been the development of creative rental agreements that encourage producers and artists performing at the Madrid to present additional performances for schoolchildren. Been a facility of expansion at Valley Cultural Center's 10 concert, summer Monday morning concert series, to include a number of additional school performances throughout the year. And as a result of your efforts, local schoolchildren have been able to experience full-length plays, operas, ballets, musical comedies, music, historical instruments, and modern dance, hip-hop, and tap. You serve on the board of the Main Street Canoga Park and the Los Angeles Women's Theater Festival, and you reside in Los Angeles with your son Carl, a singer-songwriter with the band Mudlicious.
Mudluscious.
Mudluscious.
Yes.
Mudluscious. And Stardom will come to him, and he's going to perform at the Madrid. So on behalf of the city of Los Angeles for your contributions in sharing your talent and in teaching the rich, multicultural heritage of music that bridges our diverse communities together, congratulations on being honored this Los Angeles Music Week, December 2006. Denise, Leader Strober, thank you. Couple words, couple words, in English. I mean, with the accent, I mean.
It's my pleasure to be here, and I'd just like to thank Dennis and the Cultural Affairs Department of Los Angeles, also the County Arts Commission and Valley Cultural Center for the opportunity to build the Madrid Theater into a community resource so that children from all of your districts are able to come and experience live performance. So many of them, this may be their only opportunity, and it's my privilege to be able to provide that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good job. Thank you, Mr. Zine. Congratulations, Denise. Now, someone who has so much music in her district with all the various facilities, but this is some very special recognition for a group of young people, please welcome Councilmember Jan Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labonge, and we are joined by the New Jefferson Continuation School family with their wonderful principal, Enrique Gonzalez. He has taught at all levels of education, just to name a few schools, The Webb School, Chaffey High School, Gary. He took three different schools to the CIF playoffs as a varsity basketball coach, and he also taught at the California Youth Authority, Camp Rocky, or Camp Hockey, I'm sorry, I was thinking about Rocky Doggito, and El Camino School for the Developmentally Disabled. In each of these settings, Mr. Gonzalez has developed an educational philosophy which he is presently using in the Los Angeles Unified School District as principal at the New Jefferson Continuation High School. He is an avid guitarist and has developed a strong musical program at the school called Son de Otslan, featuring the Harana Son Harocho guitar and Andean flutes. Performing throughout the city, the students have developed into a wonderful blend of harochos, guitarists, and dancers, zapatieros, that are performing at several venues and events, all with the purpose of inspiring young people through music and dance. For over five years, Enrique has concentrated his efforts on native and indigenous cultures to work and create a reawakening of culture through music and dance, and it is with an enormous amount of pleasure that I recognize him and all the students, and I think teachers here to support, because they looked older than students, to support him as he continues his very good mission of bringing music, art, and culture into the lives of young people in South Los Angeles. Mr. Principal.
Just want you to say a few nice words. Say a few words.
Thank you very much for paying a little bit of attention here to what I'm about to say. Our young people in Los Angeles are hurting. Schools are destroying kids today in America because of our lack of understanding what it takes to learn. A conceptual design change has to happen. These young people are evidence of that fact. South Central Los Angeles, we don't need to discuss all of the political issues, you're well aware, and these kids just went through a history lesson that's fabulous, watching the interaction of what you all did, which is great, fantastic stuff. We found that through music and culture, we can regenerate in a young person their mind, their ideology, their thinking, to desire to learn. All of these young people here are successful because they found that. With them stand Armando Lawrence and Louis Ruana, Bobby Verdugo from the Bienvenidos Family Service Center, who come from seven, eight miles away without getting paid to work with these young people about cultura, music, et cetera, et cetera, et so forth. Their grades have changed dramatically, their GPAs are going through the roof. Our school is the first big-picture school in Los Angeles Unified School District history. You don't know about that yet, but I'm sure you're going to hear about it soon. It's a credit to student-interest-based learning, not curriculums for all. At our school, there will be 140 curriculums for 140 kids, and we start with culture and use the music as the avenue to make them successful in the way that you've just described, some of the folks that need to be successful in our city. So together, we're going to rebuild South Central LA from the inside out and then across the country as we create these fabulous leaders. Thank you very much.
Everybody, everybody, back, we'll take a nice picture.
Good student wants to speak. Go ahead, student, anybody who wants to speak.
They're all running away from the mic.
Aaron's going to speak.
Well, first of all, I'd just like to say I feel obliged to be a student here at New Jefferson Continuation High School, particularly because the music program there is so unique than anywhere in any other school. And most schools will have an orchestra or marching band, but over here, we incorporate culture within the music, in the Son Harocho group and the Andean flutes that originates from South America. And it's pretty much it. Thank you.
Jefferson have a marching band this year? No. All right. All right, again, Jefferson High School. New Jefferson High School. Give them another hand there. I'd like to ask that Councilmember Herb Wesson of the 10th District join us here for his very special presentation. He has many fine art and cultural facilities throughout his district that are also recognizing special people. Mr. Wesson.
I want to thank you, Mr. Labonge, and before I talk about the phenomenal individual that I'm going to highlight today, I would like to request that everybody give Margie Evans another round of applause for all of her hard work. She's been a great friend of mine. I want to read you just a quick quote from the New York Valley Voice. "The ability to capture the inherent spirit of music makes Gigi's conducting an adventure in music-making." All of us have met hundreds, maybe thousands of peoples, and we know people that say, "I don't like sports. I don't like football. I don't like fish. I don't like chicken." But we have never met an individual that says, "I don't like music." They may like different types of music, but everybody loves music. So it is with great honor that I present to you Efrem Gigi. I want to tell you a few things about this man. Where are you? Come up here. And I want you to know that he wasn't selected because we're the same size. He's a great, he's a great musician. He was born in Panama. He was raised in Argentina, where he graduated with honors from the Buenos Aires Conservatory of Music. His talents have taken him around the world, where he's conducted the America, at the American Ballet Theater, the Puerto Rican Symphony, and he's taken the Vermont Symphony Orchestra and turned it into a national orchestra. Now, he's been honored, but I think one of the things that makes him truly special is that he recognized the need, recognized the need to pass on to young people the joy and the beauty of making music. And if you've noticed, you've heard the name Gigi a couple of times today. This is like a clean sweep for your family, your wife and your son. He's done phenomenal things in my district at a school called Laces, where he has lent his skills to teach a lot of the young people that I represent in the district. So it is with great honor that I present to you Maestro Efrem Gigi, this certificate of appreciation from the greatest city on the planet.
Beautiful. Yeah. Beautiful. That's beautiful.
Maestro, Maestro, please say a few words.
I know that you are all tired, people who come from other countries. I haven't apologized for waiting. We enjoyed, for us, this was very enlightening to be present, democracy at its best. Congratulations. I, when a few years ago came to Los Angeles, retired, because my kids live here, making movies and in the entertaining music, I was called by the local 47 professional musicians to take over the senior symphony orchestra and conduct it, and we found our call going to schools and offering arts and playing music, educational concerts for kids. This is one of many letters that we get from the kids, saying, "Thank you for the music. Good luck. Thank you. It was so good, we want more." And yes, music is extremely important for the development of the integral character in the youth. I'm very moved to have heard other honorees talking about the importance of music and the arts in the schools. To be brief, one experience that I had, I guess, conduct all over other countries, and being in Caracas, Venezuela, I was conducting a youth orchestra that I was amazed because it grew up in the slums of Caracas. The government brought teachers to teach instruments and they formed orchestras, and there was one kid saying, "I'd much rather have a violin in my hands than a gun." And that is extremely important, to use the arts for the development of the integral to save the kids of Los Angeles. Music in the schools is extremely important, and I'm taking advantage of this opportunity to emphasize to this, to this council, the need to keep developing the artistic and music program in the school. Thank you so much.
Congratulations. We'll get a family picture afterward. Thank you so much. That was very nice, Mr. Wesson. Now I'd like to call on Mr. Bernard Parks of the 8th Council District. Please give Mr. Parks a big hand here as we celebrate Music Week. This is the final presentation of this year's Music Week program.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge, and thank you, Mr. President. We'd like to just honor a person that we think has done just an absolutely wonderful job, Carol Wright Dobbs, and it's not new to her to be honored. She was selected in 2000 for her outstanding contribution to youth. She is an instructor at our Hillcrest Drive Center for Enrich Studies Music Magnet School. I'm glad we don't, I'm glad we don't have to put that on a name tag. But with that, I think she has fulfilled that mission that says if we introduce young people to the arts, if we introduce them to a variety of issues beyond just their academic books, that she has the ability to mold those students to where they become not only better students, but also better productive individuals. students, but also better productive individuals within our community. And so I just want to say, in behalf of the 8th District, and again, this is all not new to you, you've been honored numerous times, we want to give you one more certificate for your wall, or where you think is most appropriate, and say thank you for what you're doing for our youth in the 8th District.
I want to take this opportunity to thank our Councilman Parks and Margie Evans, who worked so hard for Los Angeles Music Week. This is indeed an honor and a privilege to be here. I was thinking, as I was waiting, that when I was nine years old, I believe, I was fortunate enough to be identified, to be in a music program, and I started as a young child in a public school. So I'm pretty much aware of how important music is in the lives of children. I've been doing this so long, I don't know that I'd be able to do anything else. But for those of you who support the arts, I ask you to continue to do so, and for those of you that maybe haven't, please get on the Bandwagon, because it's so important in the life of a child. And once again, I just want to take this opportunity to thank everyone for everything. Thank you again.
Mr. President, members, we've completed the celebration for Music Week. Los Angeles next year will work in cooperation with our Cultural Affairs Department and make sure everyone is recognized throughout the city for the importance of music, and we thank Margie Evans for 13 years of tireless effort here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Margie.
Thank you.
If we could reset the regular meeting, go to the special meeting, I know before, in case we lose 12 members for ordinance, if we can call the roll for the special meeting, please.
Cardnet, Skrull, Han, Labange, Parks, Reyes, Rosenthal, Smith, Wesson, Zain, Garcetti, 12 members, President, and Quarmus, President.
Okay. Take the first items, please.
Items 58 and 59 on the special meeting are items for which public hearings have not been held.
Okay. We have cards in for both of those, so let's call those both special. And Mr. Parks wanted to take 59 first, so why don't we do the public hearing on 59 at the outset?
58.
Oh, sorry, 58. My apologies. So on 58, I'd like to invite our public speakers forward, and that will be first Gary Tobin, and then we have Matt Dowd and Zuma Dog on items 58. Please, Mr. Tobin? Please welcome, two minutes, thank you.
I'm Gary Tobin. I'm president of the Los Angeles Area Chamber of Commerce, and I'm here today to comment about what it is that you are looking at doing in one of two proposals, and that is to provide an exemption on the city's grocery receipts tax for the first five or 10 years of a business being in business. And that would qualify for companies who do less than $500,000 in business, as I understand it. First of all, I think this is a good statement for the council to make. I think it's appropriate to help new businesses start up. I would try to put this into perspective for you. A company that has gross revenues of about $500,000 or less would typically have employees of five or less. So we're talking about an effort that will have an impact on brand-new businesses and very small businesses. Once those businesses get to seven, eight, 10 employees, it will not have an impact on them. But I appreciate the effort that some of the members of the council are making in this regard, and I wanted to tell you that we think it is a good step.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tobin. Appreciate your comments. Next, we have Matt Dowd.
Do we have to wait?
Excuse me, we have to finish this first.
That's right, folks, we have to do this first, we have to do that first, we have to do the presentations first.
Sir, could you please address item 58 that's before us?
The President. Extending the new business tax exemption. See, now this could be the solution to so many of your problems, and reinvigorate the city, and get some business happening, and get some money turning over, let some of these businesses off the hook you've got them on, and they might stop complaining about the other businesses around them. I'm sick of the way you made the public wait.
Our next speaker is Zuma Dog. Okay, pass? Would you like to speak, sir?
Since I have six minutes, I want to make sure I get them all in, if you lose the corner. But I just want to say once again, first, we give Dick Clark and ABC TV $20,000 yesterday. Now, we're gonna waive taxes for Hollywood. I understand you don't want runaway production. Zuma Dog does not want runaway production, but I think you're just bending over backwards for Hollywood, his money could be going for other things. And I really don't think we're gonna... See, you have the fear that you're gonna have all these Hollywood producers run over to Canada and all other places around the country. It's not gonna happen. Give them just enough appeasement that, you know... No, 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 no. Again, first, we do it with the contractors when we're building skyscrapers, and now the Hollywood people, all the corporate people, we're giving all the tax breaks to, and then we don't have the money for the constituents for things they need. You don't have to do this, you don't have to bend over backwards so much. I mean, give them some tax exemptions. They're not gonna pack up and go over to Toronto Lake you think they will. It's too hard. Just make a little bit of an appeasement, but don't bend over backwards and make the constituents pay the price. And you can also read the newspaper.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mike Pfeifer. Is Mike Pfeifer?
I'm Mike Pfeifer with the Hotel Association, and we certainly support the extension of the new business tax exemption as proposed, but considering the fast-paced economy that we're in right now, we recommend you're considering revisiting the ordinance earlier than the 10 years, perhaps after five years, to see if the credit is achieving the desired outcome or effect that you're looking for, and if it... Make sure it's not having any kind of negative effect on the city's budget. We support a five-year review of the business tax exemption rather than 10 years. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. That closes a public comment on item 58. I'd like to recognize Ms. Skrull, and then Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. And we have an item, I know Mr. Parks has introduced a motion amendment, 58A. Colleagues, this was, as many of you know, the history of this, is we've had for close to five years, an exemption for new businesses that come into the city of Los Angeles. We heard just yesterday that in fact, the number of businesses that are coming to Los Angeles continued to increase. The amount of business tax revenue we see in Los Angeles continues to grow. And we have not seen any kind of, you know, sky is falling, as people had talked about, in us trying to be business-friendly. What I asked for in my initial motion, I think which Mr. Garcetti also seconded with me, was for us to extend this in perpetuity. We heard from some others, and some issues that were brought up in Budget and Finance Committee, that that would be problematic, and that we should do it in shorter periods of time. Additionally, we wanted to include language that in case of an economic catastrophe crisis, that in fact, we would have language that would allow us to waive that, but we'd add the years on, I think, which was Mr. Smith's addition to this issue as well, who's been very supportive. I think the real point before us today, and maybe we can have the city attorney come forward as well, and the CAO, is related to whether it is five years, seven years, or 10 years. And we had in our discussion just a week ago, and this is the second reading of this item, that 10 years was something that we thought we could defend. We've heard since then there's some issue. And so I'd like the city attorney to come forward. Again, we have, if we... We've already had five years. If we have out clauses in which there's economic issues, by the time we would have this five years and an additional five years, we would be up to 10 years. From my understanding, there's no case law on this that says, it's just a gut. And my gut says 10 years, and that we should go with the 10-year period of time, that it is defensible, that there are checks and balances in the language, not only that we adopt in the Budget Committee, but I think has been presented by Mr. Parks today. But we have demonstrated in the last five years, that by being business-friendly, we in fact, get greater tax revenue, and we increase the number of new businesses that are in the city of Los Angeles. And so I would just like to give you the opportunity, because I know it's gonna be asked, and hold my time, as to five, seven, 10, perpetuity?
Yes. Peter Echeverria from the City Attorney's Office, Mr. President. The issue isn't the defensibility, the legal defense of the exemption itself. The exemption obviously could be granted permanently by the council until it's changed. However, the question that was asked, and the risk that we've been looking at, is whether if we seek to reimpose the tax after the exemption, whether we would be able to do that, or whether it could be argued under Proposition 218 and the implementing statutes under 218, that that would be a change in methodology from what the city has done by granting the exemption. Again, there is no case law directly on point. We have one case in which a similar situation is litigated, although it's slightly different on the facts as well. The belief on our part, and the best advice that we can give, is that the shorter the time, the less likely it would be viewed as a change in methodology when it is reimposed. Three, five years, we believe, would be easily defensible. Beyond that period of time, it becomes increasingly more difficult to defend. Seven years would be more, and 10 years even more so. But that's the risk, that the reimposition of the tax, in effect, would be considered a change in methodology. It's a risk, but we can't tell you conclusively that it would be one way or the other.
Right. And again, I think if you're gonna challenge us at any point in time on a 218, I think they'll challenge it whether it's five years, seven years, 10 years, in my own perspective. I think that we have seen that's been effective the last five years, the additional 10 years, I believe, again, we have language in here that I think protects the city, and that we want to be business-friendly and focus on this. And so, although I agree with Mr. Parks a lot of the time, and the city attorney, but in this instance, I think we can have the 10 years and should adopt that. We are trying to encourage new businesses, which create jobs. Mr. Reyes spoke so eloquently this morning about the importance of creating well-paying jobs in the city of Los Angeles, and to compete with our surrounding cities, it means being business-friendly and the business tax. And this is, again, an extension of something that has been successful. But as someone whose family has had a small business, you do not make decisions based on a two-year, sometimes even a five-year. It's looking at long-term, when you are going to move a substantial business into the city of Los Angeles. That's why we initially took this, put this forward, and that's why I think we should go with the 10 years. Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. I may have another question, but my time, I know, is...
Thank you.
...talked a little longer.
All right. Mr. Parks, our next speaker. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. And I want to just say that this mini-motion, I think we've solved almost all of the issues except the length of term. And I'd just like to ask the CAO and the CLA to come up to the table, and our assistant The issue, I think, we basically agree in the concept, but the one area that I think is in disagreement is the length of time. And what Peter said, and I just asked Mr. Fujioka, and then also Jerry, what is your comments as to what Pete said, as your advice to us as it relates to the financial well-being of the city?
I think today, we're focusing on, first, whether or not this should be extended. And I don't think, without there's any exception, that this absolutely should be extended. The concern is whether or not the timeline, the time period for the extension, would put this portion of the tax in jeopardy. I think I've heard Pete say that if we go beyond a reasonable period of time, and today we need to establish that period of time, yes, in fact, it could put it in jeopardy, right? Yes. And so, the key is, how do we establish that threshold? And I believe, I was on the phone, but I didn't hear your final recommendation. Your recommendation is how many years?
I believe that we can well-defend it if it were limited to the five years. Beyond that, it becomes a riskier proposition.
And what must be understood is that with respect to the extension, and with respect to, I'm sorry, the tax exemption, if we're challenged down the road, there's a possibility that we can lose tax for those individuals forever, and that would be a concern. That'd be that. The legal concern is what should really drive the final decision. I fully support the taxes, the extension of the tax exemption, but I do think we need to look at the legal consequences. If we can live with as long a period as possible, if it's something where, if it's not five, if it's seven, that could be safe, then maybe we could push it to seven. If not, if five is the date, there's a date we're gonna have to live with.
Jerry?
Well, largely, I agree with Bill. I think that it comes down to, I guess, handicapping, if you will, the potential for a legal challenge, certainly with the revenue challenges that we are facing now and could be facing in the future. That would be a concern. I think that if we would be in a position of having to go on the ballot on a 218 issue, I recall that shortly after 218 passed, there was a business surcharge that was put to the voters, and I think the conventional wisdom was that it would pass, because it was something that was already in place but wasn't grandfathered in 218, and in fact, it did not pass. So we did lose that revenue source as a result. So that's certainly a concern, but again, I think that at the end of the day, it's the advice of the attorneys as to what is legally defensible, and they haven't given you a hard and fast date. But I would be concerned about getting into a situation where we could be subject to a challenge on whether or not we've had a change in methodology.
Karen, you're gonna eventually be the CAO sitting at table. Would you give us your advice?
Well, I don't think I have much to add to what Mr. Fujioka and Mr. Miller have already said. I think particularly with the revenue challenges the city is facing, the potential for losing this revenue on an ongoing basis is real. And I would support what both Mr. Fujioka and Mr. Miller have recommended.
Pete, why don't you explain to us how we lost the first year? Because now that's permanent.
I would ask Ms. Cook to give us the question.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, the first year, if everybody's aware of it, we were gonna go with one year, then two years, but there's a reason why the first year now is permanent, and why is that?
The first year was lost because we didn't have a sunset provision in it. It was drafted in 2001, I believe, and went into effect, and there was not language in the ordinance that indicated that it sunsetted at any particular time, and therefore it became permanent. There were subsequent amendments to this particular section of the ordinance, and I believe the assumption was that when those subsequent amendments were made, that there was a sunset provision included, and therefore it would sunset at that particular time. However, when a historical review was made of it, it was determined that one particular provision for the first year did not have a sunset, and therefore it had become permanent.
Okay. And so the issue of this, so really what we're dealing with today is an extension of the second year?
That is correct.
Okay. Bill, why don't you give us a thumbnail on some of the potential financial issues we dealt with on the financial status report of what, I think it was briefly commented on, but give us some kinds of issues that may be facing the city.
Next week, we'll be bringing forward the first financial status report for the city. And it's our, the report we issue on a periodic basis that speaks to the city's financial status. What we're looking at right now is a challenge for some of our real property taxes or revenues, such as the dock inventory transfer tax. We're looking at some challenges with respect to the collection of property tax. Although property tax is strong, because of the number of foreclosures you're starting to see in the area, you're seeing a lower collection rate. We are seeing strength in the business tax. And right now, it's about a... And right now, it's about 11 million above plan. That's a very, very significant issue, and it speaks to the, what's happening through the reform process. But most importantly, the report was going to have some significant detail regarding the telephone users' tax, that is a part of a utility users' tax. We have a very significant challenge on the horizon. We're in court right now with Verizon. We know that a claim was filed by some individuals that becomes the, it's the beginning point for a classic class-action suit. We are looking at a huge potential hit. If that goes forward, it could be as much as $200 million.
Okay. Pete, let me ask you, we've been asked, would it be the same of rolling this for five and then reconsidering it for another five? Would that be in the same legal opinion that you gave us if we just kept it at 10, solid 10? Do we stand the same problem of incrementally getting to that length of time without assessing this tax?
No, I believe that if you make it for five years now, and that towards the end of that five years, if you were, if the council were to consider and decide to extend it yet again, I think that would still be a defensible subsequent action.
Okay. So there's no legal, additional legal liability to roll it over at the end of this term or close to the end of that term, rather than having one set period at this time?
Correct.
Okay. Let me just say, colleagues, on this issue, on the motion 58A, item one, I think most everyone agrees with that we have criteria before the mayor and the council can invoke an economic emergency. And I think it's pretty well-laid out from the CAO, CLA to say, these are things that we should be considered of, particularly with the items that Mr. Fujioka spoke of earlier. Also, item two is a request of the Office of Finance that basically says, we need to advise the public or the business public at a certain time, and they start their business year, so September 30th is important. Let me go to item four, that the actual reinstatement, if we opt out of this ordinance for legitimate financial reasons, that we must make enough, basically, a act, a positive act by the council to put it back in place. And then the other issue is that, basically, that number five basically asks the City Attorney to reconcile this issue. The only issue that's of concern would be item number three, and where there's the use of five years in three different sentences. And I would suggest that as we move forward with the ability of what Mr. Etcheverria said, that we have the ability to reconsider this at a future date, that we take the safe route and move forward on the five years, pretty consistent with what the business community came up to the table and spoke about, and that we then give ourselves those options to reconsider it at a later date. The reason that it was so important to find specifics in item one was that the business community would have a comfort level, that the city would not invoke an opt-out clause anytime they chose. Another item that's important to know, that if the city goes and opts out of this ordinance, we must tack on time that was opted out back onto the ordinance, which gives us the full term of five years of what we originally agreed on. So we think we've covered everything. We'd hope that we'd be prudent, particularly in light of the City Attorney's advice, all of the CAO/CLA advice, also listening to the business community, that we go forward. And I think that in looking at tax reform in the future, there may be other areas that we would consider that are for more, have for greater impact on business than rolling over this second year. I think in just coming, Mrs. Gruel's comment about businesses making a decision about businesses five years and six years, seven years, I think what's important on this is that we're only dealing with the second year of business tax for a business that's $500,000 in less in gross revenue. So it's a very narrow slice of the pie. It is not, big business is not all businesses. It's a second-year waiver of taxes for business taxes for people with $500,000 and left. The other issue I think is important on the financial policies, I believe that it states that we should not, as a council, waive a revenue source indefinitely or to eliminate it. We should always give ourselves the ability to reenact it at a later date. And so let me, I'd ask for an "I" vote on 58A.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, this is a discussion we began a week ago on this item, and it's been discussed off and on for the last couple of years. Mr. Parks, I think 58A is brilliant in 1A through E. I think that is what we need to do, protect the city. We've built in, in this motion, all the protections we need to protect the city. And if it's a small slice of the pie, then I ask, what's the big deal? Why are we talking five years or 10 years? What's the big deal for a small slice of the pie? And we have all the protections we need. A week ago, in committee, the City Attorney said, no big deal to 10 years. It wasn't a problem. All of a sudden, it's a problem. I don't understand the problem, because you've built in the protections you need, but if we reach it down, cycle in the economy, we can pull back. We can pull back at any time we want, postpone it, and then we catch up later on. I think that's the way to go. On the issue of 10 years, let me explain something to you. I think I'm the only one around here who's really had a business for a long time. I owned a tuxedo shop many years ago. I wanted to expand my shop. I wanted to take over the building next door, and I wanted to open up a second store. I went to the banker. I said, I want a loan to do this project. They said, show us a 10-year pro forma. Show me 10 years of what you're going to do financially before we give you the loan. And also, at the time I was buying boilers and things, those have seven-year tax implications. If we want people to come to LA and invest, businesses don't look at a year-to-year plan. Businesses don't look like the city government does, year-to-year. Here's what we get, here's what we spend. Businesses look at long-term investments. And their long-term investments are predicated on what the banks want to see from them, not what the government wants to see from them. And so 10 years is an important timeframe. Five years is somewhat problematic for smaller businesses. And I think as you're growing and as you want people to come here, they go to the banks and they want to see those kind of performance, not what we're asking for here today. And so, Mr. Parks, I agree with you. This is a small slice of the pie. Why are we fighting over 10 and five years? We want to send a message that we are continuing to support business. We want you to come here. We want early businesses to flourish, and the way we want to do this is waive that first tax on those small businesses. This does that. This gives them the permanence they want. It gives them a reasonable assurance that the government is committed to this, that it's not going to be at the whim of a council the next day to change his mind and get out of it, only if there's an economic downturn. And that's what we've built into 58A. And so I would suggest to the council, the 58A, and its first numbers, 1 through 2, and then 4 and 5 are fine. But 3, that sets a five-year timeframe, is not a logical conclusion, and if it has, it's not a big slice of the pie. We shouldn't vex over it. We shouldn't be concerned. And we certainly don't need to show an overabundance of extreme caution for this little item. This is not those kind of issues that's going to bankrupt the city, particularly the financial controls that Mr. Parks put in, in sections 1A through, through E. And so I suggest we look at 1 through E, accept that, make it a 10-year within a five-year. That's a logical determination to make. And finally, I just got to say, I don't know who's going to sue us over this. You're concerned about liability on someone's going to sue on property? Who's going to sue us? Who possibly out there would sue over this issue? I don't know who that is. I really don't. And if there was somebody concerned about it, where have they been? We've been talking about this for years. We've done it. No one sued us on the first five years. Why is anybody going to be concerned about the second? So ladies and gentlemen, I would just suggest we accept 58A, 1A through E, 2, 4, and 5, and go back on section 3 and change it to 10 years rather than five.
My second amendment.
Ms. Gruel says she'll, I'll make that as a motion, as a supplemental motion.
Okay. Let's go to Mr. Labonge next. And again, that can be accepted as a friendly amendment if there's no objection, but I imagine, Mr. Parks, did you want to accept that as a friendly amendment or not? Just as a matter of order?
I have a concern on the wording, because if we have in the language that if we opt out and we add to the period, we could actually be going 15 years down the road as opposed to sunsetting it at 10. So all of this language was worked out to where we'd have the best situation for the city to control our destiny and to have the ability to go back, as Pete said, at four years or whatever, and revoke this in. But if we start tampering with the language, all five items kind of support each other. And so part of the language says that we would add back what we replaced. And so if we go 10 without a cap, we could end up going back to where it's, if we opt out for three years or four years, we could be into a 15-year period. And so that's my concern.
Okay. So I'm going to interpret that that's not accepting as a friendly?
No.
Okay.
Friendly, not friendly.
Mr. Labonge?
Well, I want to go F for friendly on this one here, if I got a friendly amendment here. Members, one thing that would be helpful to me as a member of council, and I see our, both our city administrative officers here together, and those in the City Attorney's Office, Mr. Miller, you remember Sylvia Nedsmith, who worked at the Tax and Permit Office down on the first floor for many, many years? Anytime there was a problem with taxes, I would go down there. I remember many, 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 maybe 30 years ago, I went down there and I talked, and I asked her, who pays the most taxes in Los Angeles? And that's confidential. Is that right, Madam City Attorney?
Yes, it is. It is confidential.
But I think it would helpful, but what would be helpful, and this is the friendly amendment, is if we had the categories that pay the taxes in some form or fashion, that it'd be presented to us by the CAO in a friendly way every year. Who, do we know where our sources come? How much do auto dealerships? At the time, there were still dairies in the city, and I believe Carnation, which still headquartered on Wilshire Boulevard, was the highest taxpayer. I think for us to make decisions about everything, it's good to know what categories do they come from. Mr. CAO, with all your experience and the baton that you're going to pass off soon, do we know the categories that people pay taxes on in computerized way?
The answer is yes.
So you could provide that information without violating the law?
Just in broad categories?
Like auto, auto sales, auto, auto-related uses, hotels, restaurants.
We could do that.
But I think it would be extremely important, because I don't know if I know all this facts, to make decisions based on taxation, which is so important for us. So that's a friendly amendment if Mr. Parks wants to accept F as a friendly amendment that the CAO annually provide? And would it be the CAO? You would work with the Department of Finance?
Yes.
The CAO would provide annually the various groups by category of who pays the taxes. Mr. President?
If there, anybody who objects to that?
Maker of the motion object?
For friendly amendments, it has to be unanimous, everybody.
Okay, but I don't know if the maker of the motion.
So if there's no objection, it's accepted as friendly.
But I don't know if the maker of the motion.
Can you, can you reiterate what the amendment is, please?
Mr. Parks, Mr. Labonge, would you just restate for Mr. Parks to see if there's any objection to that? If not, that will be accepted as friendly?
On a friendly motion would be amendment here to add to it, whether it be F or wherever it be placed, that annually, the city administrative officer prevent in category the groups of organizations, businesses that are paying the taxes. Because I think it's real important we see where the revenue's coming from. You have any problem with that?
Yeah, I don't think it's a problem, just because we advised.
Okay. That one will be accepted as friendly.
No, but I want the CAO to present it every year in some form or fashion.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ms. Gruel.
Thank you. And if we, I need to separate this for a moment. One is, do we think encouraging businesses to come to Los Angeles and letting them have two years where they're not paying business tax, where it's $500,000? Let's, let's think about this. You said, Mr. Smith, $500,000 or less. I don't know if we have the number of how many businesses that is, that are not, you know, but it's between the $100,000 and $500,000, because now if you're $100,000 or gross each loss, you pay no business tax. So it's a small amount. I think generally in this room, and I think even the CAO and City Attorney, CLA would say, we should, we should do that. The problem is, if there's a catastrophe. This is what we've written in. Mr. Fujioka, you indicated that we have an issue regarding a lawsuit or a legal opinion. That would be taken care of by 1D.
Which is right.
1B would take care of an economic decline in a, in greater than 1%. I'm asking the City Attorney and the CAO and CLA, is there anything that's not on this list that you would expect would cause us to bring this back up again? Because we have the language here, and if someone wanted to sue us, they would sue us, whether it was five years, six years, seven years, eight years, even three years from now. You have put in this language, which we talked about in committee and has been now memorialized in this, in this amendment, language that protects us for some of the things that we anticipate are on the horizon. So in my perspective, you have set it up that if there's some major catastrophe, we can deal with that financially. And I guess I'm asking that question. Is there any instance that we would not be able to utilize 1A through 1E? Is there anything else that comes up? So why would we ever want to reinstate it, the tax, if in fact we've put in checks and balances here?
It seems to cover all the, you know, the major issues that would necessitate canceling the exemption.
Right. So if you went into a court of law and you sued for some reason because we looked at 1D, that risk would exist whether it was tomorrow, next year, five years, or 10 years from now? Correct?
Well, the threshold, I'd have to rely on the City Attorney. The threshold issue is whether or not the same circumstance would exist at the end of the fifth year, or at the end of the 10th year, or beyond that. I would think time would have an impact on it. I would think it would.
But I, so I ask the City Attorney's Office, if in year three, someone challenges one of these things, it's the same challenge as in year seven or eight, right? It's about the basis of which you made your decision for reinstating it based on the criteria you've established, not that it exists.
Correct. The concern, though, under 218 is the ability to reimpose the tax and do away with the exemption altogether.
Reimpose the tax under situations, under situations that do not exist in this current motion.
At all. Because at that, at the end of that time, we're talking about the ability to do away with the exemption and just have the tax applied.
But...
Not, not under these exceptions.
Okay. And what I'm saying is, I can't see this council, if none of these exemptions or these, these challenges exist, reinstating the tax just because. Because I think we've gone on record saying, we want to encourage businesses. It's worked for the last five years. We've in fact seen revenue increase. We in fact have seen more businesses come in. That, my point is, we have put all of the checks and balances, and I cannot fathom any other reason why we would reinstate it. And that, the risk exists, as you've described it, as to taking away and reinstating it, whether it is next year, five years, 10 years down the road. And I haven't heard, based on my question now, from any of you, that there's a different risk, other than the fact if you wanted to reinstate it just because.
As to discretionary revenue, correct?
Correct. Okay. I want all my colleagues to hear that. If you're worried, if you want to say, we want to be business-friendly in the city, and you can't imagine us reinstating this unless 1 through E exists, we are protected with 1 through E in the motion that we, that Mr. Parks has adopted, that we talked about in council, that the City Attorney has drafted. This puts that into perspective. I also think, on the other hand, even if it was 10 years, it wouldn't matter whether it's five years, eight years, or 10 years, think of as you go longer. So I would ask for a support of the amending motion that Mr. Smith put in, which allows us for the 10 years, because I think we're adequately supported in this, and we've put the language in here. I, again, I just can't imagine, I think we send a bad message if we say, yeah, we just want to put 1F here, which says, any other reason that we decide we want to have more money in the coffers. That's my position.
Mr. Rosendahl's, the next speaker.
Comment, Mr. President. What I find amazing is the tie-in of what we just did earlier on living wages to this. We are truly business-friendly. I think what Greg Smith said made a lot of sense, and I'm supportive of him, and I appreciate what Wendy Gruel's leadership has been on this. We are a business-friendly city, and this is a demonstration and example of that business-friendliness. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Parks?
Let me just ask, I have a couple of final questions. May I ask Antoinette to come up and Mr. Cristofal? I just want to get, just so we're aware of what we're dealing with in numbers, could you just give us what the trend has been in the sense of new businesses and what this will cost us per year?
Okay. Over the six-year period that we've had...
Okay, over the six-year period that we've had the new business exemption, we've added about 25,000 new businesses each year that have taken advantage of that exemption. And the revenue associated with that is about $5 million a year.
Okay, so you said $5 million or $6?
Five to $6 million a year.
Five to $6 million a year. So as we've said earlier with the, some of the... I'll go back to, where's Bill? As we talked about some of the earlier issues on finances, over the life of this, we could get $30 million. Does that impact us as it relates to some of the potential financial concerns that you've expressed earlier?
I apologize for having my back to you, but now that, in isolation, yes, there'd be an impact. But this, that's the kind of, that particular question is very difficult to answer in that kind of context, because when we look at our revenue, we look at the city revenue as a whole and not individual parts, because there are some individual parts that tend to underperform and some, some exceed our performance expectations. But yes, in isolation, any $3 million hit would hurt. If as a consequence, after the, this exemption period, these new businesses down the road start to pay us business tax, that's a different issue. And so it, it's hard to just answer that.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve 1, 2, 4, and 5, and separate 3 out as a separate issue.
Okay. We, if there's no objection, we'll, we can vote on... We would vote on the amendment first, but in terms of the vote when it comes, we would separate that out.
Okay.
So just procedurally, as a point of, of order, what would happen is first, because that, a vote splitting is not a different motion or amendment. So you have yours that is before us first as an amendment to this...
It's a substitute, really, because it changes the whole intent.
So the substitute slash amendment to, I mean, it, it will procedurally have the same effect.
So, Mr. President, I do believe the first question would be on whether to substitute the question.
Right. And then if that passes, we take a vote on it as substituted. If it doesn't, we come back to it. If you want to make the motion, if the substitute goes through, you still want to split them?
Well, all I wanted to make sure is that, as we went through the debate, that items 1, 2, 4, and 5 were significant in the document, that we get these things approved, and we can debate the 5, 7, 10.
Okay. If there's no objection, whether the substitute goes through or not, that's how we will vote on it.
Okay, that's all I'll say.
Okay, great. Anybody else wishing to speak? That's the end of the queue?
We voted yes on the substitute.
Okay. All right, so with that, we have first either a substitute or amending motion, call it what you will, the Mr. Smith's motion of that one change. And if you could reiterate what that is, Mr. Clerk, again, for the body before we vote.
Mr. President, I do believe the first question would be whether to substitute.
Okay, but could you remind us, as people will vote on whether to substitute, the substance of it, I think, is important, so...
This is whether to substitute the Smith-Gruehl motion, which approves recommendations 1, 2, 4, and 5 of Mr. Parks's motion, and changes number 3 to make it 10 years.
Okay. So again, voting on this, colleagues, is not a final vote on the motion, it is whether to substitute this in place. Okay? Everybody clear on that?
Good.
Please open the roll.
We'll ask for no vote.
Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Six ayes, five noes.
Okay, that doesn't go forward, so now we will vote on each one individually. So, sorry, not individually, 1, 2, 4, and 5. So we'll take 1, 2, 4, and 5 first. Mr. Parks, is that all right? And then...
If that fails, we can just go with the whole motion.
So you would withdraw that? Voting on it separately?
The issue is that motion failed.
I'd ask for the holdover until we have more members present, because I know some of those colleagues...
Let me just ask.
What does the 1, 2, 4, and 5?
Hold on. Ms. Gruehl, you moved a continuance, is that...
Well, I, I don't want to vote...
You haven't voted on the ordinance yet.
I do not want to vote, vote on the entire item without more members present.
Then we should vote no. But the issue is that...
So you're moving to hold on the desk?
We should move the whole item because that motion failed.
Okay, hold on, we have a motion on, we have, we have a motion that would took, that would take precedence that Ms. Gruehl's made.
To continue.
Can't, just hold it on, on the desk because there's objections, so it would have to be to continue. So this would be a vote to continue till, when? Till Tuesday's meeting?
I, I will not be present on Tuesday, so...
Wednesday?
So I won't be, I won't be here next week.
Okay.
So the following week, I would recommend.
No one would...
Anybody going on to business in the next week?
So till November 29?
Okay, cool.
It'll be two weeks?
Two weeks, that would be okay.
Well, let me just say, the concern was when we brought it today, was last week, we rushed it through because there was urgency. And so now we're here today, and we're saying two weeks is sufficient, because we had asked for a continuance more than till today, and the statement was, "We had to get it done this week." So now all of a sudden, we're here this week, and the motion failed, and now we're saying two weeks is fine.
Well, my reason for asking it to be today was because I was going to be at the League of Cities on, on Friday. There was no urgency clause from what I understood. Was that urgency based on the Office of Finance being able to send this information out?
That urgency was your statement, that you wanted to not give us a continuance, but move it over to Wednesday this week. That's why it's here today, because when we asked for it last week, you said you didn't want to go beyond Wednesday. Whatever. If people want to vote, they vote. Then we should continue.
We have a motion before us to continue for two weeks, colleagues. That is what's before us.
What is the, did you have an urgency, September 30?
On a point of information, is there urgency to this?
Antony Crisobal, Office of Finance, you know, certainly in the Office of Finance, we would like to have the matter addressed as soon as possible.
Can't hear, please.
I'm sorry, can you get a little closer to the microphone?
Antoinette Crisobal, the Office of Finance, now certainly for our office, we would like to have the matter addressed as soon as possible, because what we would like to do is to advise the business community as to whether or not the second-year exemption will in fact continue or expire, and it will expire on December 31 of this calendar year. So the sooner we get this resolved, we will be able to get the message out. If it is delayed, you know, we will just have to notify them.
Point of, point of... And how much money would that be?
I have a question to...
Mr. Smith?
Ms. Crisobal, if we were to pass 1, 2, 4, and 5, which says we're going to do it without the time element, could you then notify them for this year at least, that we've passed the extension, and we'll come back and talk about the timeframe at a later date? Would that work?
As long as it's extending the second year beyond the December 31, 2006 date, and I think that's what you're saying.
Well, I think we agree on it, but we're saying the timeline, you would tell them what, it's one year? I mean, what we're saying is, what's the term? That's what we thought the urgency was.
Well, I mean, if, if we could advise them that it's five years or 10 years, whatever's decided, that would be better. But if a decision can't be made at this point, we would have to wait until that decision is made. But in the interim, we do have the December 31 deadline that we're bumping up against, and we do need to advise those businesses that have already opted and exercised the first exemption, that whether or not they will be allowed to go forward with a second year. And it's important that we get the notification out sooner than later.
Okay. On this, with points of information, unless we want to reopen the debate, yes, Mr. Cardenas?
Yeah, point of information, can you please let us know right now, if we postpone this decision in part and in its entirety for two weeks, would you still be able to notify the businesses by December 31?
I will be able to notify.
Not whether or not it's easy or hard, will you be able to do that?
Yes, I will.
Okay. There you go, two weeks.
Okay. We have, we have before us two things. We have before us now the motion to continue.
Okay.
We also have the ordinance, depending on, on what happens with the motion to continue.
Second, the motion to continue.
I'd like to also correct my vote on that past one, I know, and it sort of been a yes, and I regret that. We can correct that.
Didn't change the outcome.
Doesn't change, doesn't change the outcome.
Yeah, doesn't change the outcome.
If we have, we have before us to continue, is there objection to continuing?
Yes.
Okay, so we have an objection to continue, we will vote on the continuance. We had, this is a vote just on the continuance, and that is for two weeks till the 29th of this month, okay?
Mr. President, what was the clarity you said on yes is no and no?
I mistakenly had no vote on something like that, I understood to be yes.
So a no is a no?
A no is usually a no, correct, but I, but I voted yes, though I pressed the no button. If we can please open the roll on continuous, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes, one no.
That will be continued for two weeks. Okay? Next, Mr. Cardenas is asked to take up item 59 out of order. We do have cards on that, and then we'll be coming to public comment, and we do appreciate people's patience on that, as we want to make sure we have quorum for our ordinances today. We have public comment cards filled out first by Mr. Matt Dowd on item 59.
Thank you, Natalie.
Hold on, we have a public comment.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Tony. It's great to be on the, on an issue now relative to the new police facility, only because I, I had my public comments edited yesterday at the Police Commission. I have the video of that, so that, that's another issue, but I want to talk about this $500 million bond. I just want to mention that the Police Commission is struggling over there. They want $1.5 million for a helicopter that they, they can't even get. Now, it's about time we put the money in the right place. I think you need helicopters before you need $500 million worth of building.
Thank you. Arnold Sachs is our next speaker.
Oh, cool. Just in a minute.
After that will be Zuma Dog.
There's a headline, we go.
Zuma Dog, do you want to go? Go ahead. We're waiting for Sachs.
I want to be disrespectful to Mr. Sachs.
Okay.
He's already started walking.
I thank you very much. I'd just like to make a few comments about this. It almost is too easy. In today's newspaper, there was an article regarding a settlement, a problem with a settlement for a lawsuit filed by the firemen for $2.1 million.
So this is comments for the bond issue?
I understand, sir. If you'd let me continue. And yet, in this bond issue, there's a, the CEO of this county, city, whatever, stated that this could cost the city $21 million based on the way the bidding is done. And I believe that a couple of the council members were upset because of the settlement that was issued by the city in the fireman lawsuit, yet nobody seems to be upset about the fact that it could cost the city $21 million in this bond issue, the way it's going to be sold. Additionally, the CEO said that when the DWP issued bonds, that, that situation cost the city $10 million. And yet, we're back again, the same people are back again in front of the city council asking for a bond issued to be sent, to be used by local businesses instead of voted out, and it's already been proven that, or I believe that it was proven that it was cost $10 million the first time the DWP did it. I wonder what would happen if the firemen showed up again and asked for another $2.1 million in another civil settlement. Additionally, I just find it really weird that a syndicate is being asked to construct the police department. I went to the Ronald Reagan Building, that's some SOB. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. We have Zuma Dog as our next speaker.
Hell no, hell no. He was still here. Can you restart it? Can you restart the clock? It was, thank you.
Yes, this is from last week, current item 59, and there's $500 million bonds for the police station, and I know that we had one council member who was for the negotiation and the other one that was for biddings. What this really is about is trying to protect people's election campaign contributions. A lot of the people that will be affected by this are campaign contributors, two council members, assembly members, and Secretary of States and things like that. So just so the people know, they're trying to keep the money here, oh, some of the council members here are trying to keep this money in their own coffers. Why wouldn't you want to have competitive bids? You know, you want to have... That's what it's about. I got some more time. So basically, yes, this is about people trying to protect this special interest money and keep it from going elsewhere. It's going to cost the city more, and I think I would just like to notify the public that what this is really about is just protecting the money being donated to a campaign contributions, and nobody can tell me I'm wrong on that, because I got the proof, y'all, Zuma Dog.
I close our public comment. We can call on Councilmember Cardenas as our first speaker.
Thank, thank you very much, Mr. President. First of all, I feel compelled to clarify that the federal law does not allow any of these bond companies to contribute to any local electeds in the entire country, and if they do, they'll be in handcuffs. So that's not happening, not going to happen, so let's just make that very clear. Secondly, I'd like to unfortunately clarify something that came out in the LA Times today. Natalie, can you clarify for us? The LA Times said that this, these are fixed-rate general obligation bonds. Is that the case? If not, what are they?
No. Natalie Bril with the City Administrative Officer, these are fixed-rate lease obligation bonds that are issued by MICLA, which is this financing authority in which we issue bonds by.
So the LA Times was inaccurate with that description, correct?
Correct.
These are two different kinds of obligations?
Correct.
Okay, so the LA Times was wrong on that point, and I don't want to go through all the 10 different things that I found wrong in the LA Times, but I do want to point out that the LA Times, again, is taking out of context, an extrapolation that Mr. Fujioka did off the top of his head in front of all of us, the potential, if, if the market were down that day when we went out to market, we could lose X number of basis points, it might translate into $21 million. I remember him saying that. It was extrapolation off the top of his head. Equally, by the way, if we went out to market, we could actually be on the upside, $21 million, even by that same logic.
Correct.
So they're taking it totally out of context. Secondly, it appears that we've already, we're on the upside already, when, on a negotiated process, the lead underwriter basically says what rate in which they're going to get compensated for doing the work. And in the competitive recommendation, it was possible that we could have paid anywhere between four, maybe even five points on that. And it, what, what is, what is the rate that, that the lead underwriter has quoted to the city that they would charge? How many basis points per minute?
On the negotiated?
On the negotiated, yeah.
I believe it's 2.75.
Okay, 2.75. And if it's my understanding correctly, the documentation on the competitive was guestimating, who knows? It could be as high as five points.
Correct.
From my understanding. So if we want to speculate, we're already about $1 million ahead of the game, and we haven't even gone to market yet. Again, I'm not saying that that's what I'm saying, but what I'm saying is, if we want to put speculation into the arguments here, we, somebody could actually say, based on 2.75 versus five, we're actually easily $1 million ahead of the potential game, had we ended up paying as much as five points on a competitive sale. So I think it's important for me to say that out of respect for my colleagues and this council, because the LA Times put out some information, a lot of times you believe, because it's the Los Angeles Times, they did their homework, they know exactly what they're talking about. I'm looking forward to meeting with the board or whoever wrote this, and sitting down and explaining to them where they were wrong, et cetera. It'd be nice for them to tell the readers what's right and wrong, but in this case, they didn't. So I just wanted to point that out. And also, I don't have any more questions, but I would like to thank the CLA's office for taking our recommendations on the levels of our participation, and it seems that there's And it seems that there's now a concurrence, and we're moving forward, uh, with this process, and hopefully it'll all work out the best for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Perry is our next speaker, and then Ms. Grul.
Mr. Fujioka, could I ask you, I, to come to the table?
Short timer.
Um, on a going-forward basis, could you make some recommendations, um, on how to, uh, develop a process so that we can encourage more minority participation? Um, how, what we would need to do and take steps as a policymaking body to achieve that? Uh, under both, uh, competitive as well as negotiated?
And, uh, it's important that I separate what we're trying to do today.
Yeah. Mr. Cardenas?
Point of clarification. I'm not sure we have that ability in this arena when it comes to minority participation. If it's local or otherwise, I think that there might be, might be.
Yeah, no, you're right, you're right. Support, it's poor choice of words. Local versus...
Well, what I like, what I like to do is, one, today we have, I believe there's a motion to, uh, there's even a findings that the, the council must reach to allow us to go forward with this bond, because now that the council has ruled, we do need to, to take care of business and go forward with this bond. Separate apart from this bond, there is the, uh, in, there's some, there's some significant importance to ask us to come back with a procedure and a process for, um, to achieve this goal that is trying to be achieved today. And to come up with a process and how we, in fact, would encourage more, um, local participation, and participation from, um, different, different various communities within the, um, within LA, LA's financial community, to participate on our bond sales on a go-forward basis. So I think it's a reasonable instruction, and I know that we have received a letter from the mayor that has given us 90 days to come forward, what to develop a process to achieve the goal of increasing, um, local participation, especially participation from, um, minority and female firms. Now, we can't just, we can't restrict it to that, because there are laws that prohibit us to, from restricting our, our, um, underwriting and, and bond activities to just one group of individuals, but as far as increasing participation at a local level, that's something we should do. It's something we had mentioned before, and that's, I think, you should ask our office with your CLA to take the time and come back with a policy, even, we'd like to even issue an RFP.
Okay.
To identify all the firms out there who could participate, so you can see the whole universe. Because there are a lot of folks out there who are willing and able to participate, and they should be given the opportunity.
Okay. Yeah, why don't I see if I can put together something with the CAO and the CLA, and we can do a broadcast, uh, by email throughout the city, to see if we can define the universe and, uh, use, uh, uh, some of that, uh, input we can get to help devise a strategy that may work.
And, and we can help with that. We'll work with, we'll work with the CLA on that. And we can also, um, work, work on the RFP to identify those firms who can, uh, participate in this type of effort. Okay, but we do need, we have a motion today. We do need to have that passed so we can go forward with this sale.
Um, Ms. Grul.
Uh, thank you. And, and my question was trying to, uh, was what 59A is? Is this the findings? Is that what you?
Yes.
Required to take action on that today?
Yes, we need to pass 59A.
Um, and, and my, uh, question goes to, um, the issue, and which I think you've somewhat addressed, is the difficulty that those of us on the council have, um, in, when a, a project comes forward. I remember many months ago when we had the DWP, the original one, and it was a 245 that came over, and I voted no against that, because I believe that we need to have a policy before we go out, that it's a broad-based policy. We're not talking about a specific project, because then it becomes convoluted, or there are questions about it. And so I'm, I'm, I'm glad that you are moving towards having that policy that is going to identify for us in the future, because I think there's a general consensus, um, of this, of this council, of wanting to reach out to local and, uh, you know, not only locally Los Angeles, California firms, and see in which we can, again, create more jobs and create the investment in, in the community, but we also want to do it in a fair and equitable manner. Um, and I think the best way to do that is when we have an overall policy that is enacted prior to a special, a specific project coming to, to us. So I look forward to you coming back with that. But I did have the question on 59A, what that was, if there was any change from what had been asked of us before?
No.
In this motion?
59A, right.
Yeah, 50, 59A allows us to move forward with this deal and with this financing.
And could you respond to the questions raised about the 21 million or not, or what the, the figures are?
Um, with respect to the accuracy, or with respect to, um, whether or not it speaks to just one side?
I mean, I think the question is whether a negotiated...
I, I responded to a very specific question. And, um, and I was, and you have to put it in context. I believe Councilman Cardenas put it in context. The question I was asked, uh, is, would it be, was a potential, um, impact to going negotiated versus competitive? At that point, I gave my answer. And I gave it based on, um, a rough estimate of, you know, what's happening currently in the market, the impact of, uh, how many basis points could, could change from, from even this week to next week. Those basis points are changing. It, it's going to change next month. It's a very, very fluid market. So we did give that estimate. But it is, I think, and Councilman Cardenas did, he, he tried to put it in context. So, today, my focus, to be very candid, because we're at a point in time where we need to move this facility, we need to move this bond, uh, we feel that, what we put together, we worked with the various offices to put 59A together as a means to move this forward. I'm very, very pleased with the, um, the instruction to put a policy together and allow us to put an RFP. So, and I, I understand that's something that you've, you've talked to me about in terms of the importance of having that put together, and today is a day to, um, to move forward.
Mr. Cardenas?
Thank you for that clarification. We appreciate it. Done.
Mr. Lavange?
Mr. Cardenas, on this here, I think it's important, as you look at this, I, you suggested of going across the street to talk to the people at, uh, 220 West Second Street. Bring Mr. Fujioka with you, because I think it's really important to have it all on the table there, a, as we look at this issue. And I, I know I spoke to Mr. Parks about this issue, and he explained it to me, that the interest of where it is. You feel comfortable, Mr. Fujioka, with this, as we move forward? That's what I want to hear. Because I support Mr. Cardenas, but I want you to say that you feel comfortable.
You know what's interesting with this, is I think I was very, very, um, I wasn't shy last week. I laid out what I thought was a good course of action, but what's also very important to, um, to recognize is that we're at a point in time now where we do need to go forward. And, um, what I'm saying, that we took the time to work with various offices and, and had input from, um, as many folks as possible to construct 59A, we did so with the intent of moving forward. You know, we have a bond that we must sell, we have, um, we have a building that we need to start, and there ain't delays in that building. If we're talking about, um, a cost impact, delaying this sale, regardless of whether or not we go and negotiate or competitive, there's going to be a cost impact, because construction costs are just crazy right now. So I need to get the, the police headquarters building, um...
Underway.
Going. And then, from a fiscal perspective, uh, you know, I'm kind of a hard head, I'm going to tire you till the day's over, the, um, a competitive sale is better. From a social policy effort, I respect and understand what's being done, because I understand the focus is trying to include, uh, more local involvement. And so those are critical decisions that have to be made, and neither one outweighs the other.
But it can be made for the right of all people of Los Angeles, and this is some of a policy decision that we could make.
And that's, and that's what happens around this horseshoe, is they, you weigh what's, what's best, you look at all issues, whether it's fiscal or the, or the social impact, the community impact, and then you give us direction, and once that direction is given, then, then we go through the mechanics of making it happen. Today is a day to, to make the mechanics happen.
Thank you, Mr. Fujioka. Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Thank you, Mr. Parks.
Thank you.
Mr. Reyes.
I hate to beat a dead horse, but I missed something here. Are we losing money in this transaction?
I don't know that.
At this point, see, I had mentioned that we could lose some money.
Could.
We could. We would know, we would know with absolute certainty, because right now, it's very difficult to call with absolute certainty until it's over. Until we, we actually go to the market, we sell, we can look at other deals that are happening at that same time. Uh, we had a lot of discussion of it on that, um, trying to move us away from that discussion to the point of making this happen.
Okay. Are we gaining money in the process?
You know, at the same, because I can't say with certainty we're losing, I can absolutely not say with certainty that we're gaining.
Okay, can we?
You can't tell.
Can we? We're playing with words here, but can we gain money?
We won't be able to tell, tell this, we actually sell the bonds.
But can we? Can we?
Hmm?
Can we gain money?
I don't know.
Okay, you think we can?
I, I think that we don't necessarily gain or lose. I think that our belief, and I want to tell you why. I think that when you go competitive, in the long run, we believe, we've always said this, that we get a better interest rate. What Councilman Cardenas was discussing about how much each underwriter makes is, is correct. So there is a balance between what the underwriters make and the amount of interest that we pay. We still believe that on a competitive deal, in the broad sense, not necessarily for this specific deal.
Right.
We do better competitive overall.
But I want to be real clear here.
But that's, that's what I mentioned earlier.
Okay. This dialogue has created an environment where now there's accusations that we are now feeding into certain interest groups, certain companies, by our actions. That is what's being said in the press, that's what's being said around the horseshoe.
Four firms, I think.
I want to be clear, the integrity, I believe, of this council is on the table. We're trying to find, from my colleague, Councilman Cardenas, because we're using words as can. You're giving reasons why we can't answer it, but I want to be real clear. You're saying we can gain money for our coffers in this process, and we're saying that we might not lose money in the process. I'm just trying to be clear here.
Well, Councilman Reyes, when I came to you, and I understood that there's a heavy interest in, in negotiated sales, uh, versus competitive sales. When we presented this proposal to you, um, earlier, we were presented it based on our best analysis, as we would do any kind of deal. At that point in time, you know, despite the, um, the, um, push to go with a negotiated sale, I still came forward and said you should do a competitive sale. That's, that's because, in my best judgment, it's the best structure for this type of bond. I heard the council speak to, um, some other issues that are just as important, and I mentioned those are social issue. But if you look at it in a just straight context of, um, a financial transaction, I'm not, you know, it, it would be, you know, uh, it'd be difficult for someone like me, and you know who, what I do and who I am, to tell you anything otherwise than what I told you last week, what I've told you last month or, or last year. I still feel that for a deal of this type, it's a vanilla deal, it's a lease bond. For a deal of this type, a competitive deal would be financially the best deal. But then, what, I told you, we had other considerations that we're looking at, and I heard loud and clear those considerations, and now we're going forward.
Right, and the way I'm seeing it is that as I listen to the discussion, I'm learning there's discretionary points within your realm of work and your responsibilities. I'm hearing my colleague opening up questions about how we use our discretion to perhaps address those social issues, because we need to bring our money back into our city, because we lose a lot of money. But to portray this in a manner in which we're doing this because we want to put money in a friend's pocket, or a company's pocket, or an entity's pocket, is the worst type of message that could be sent out, because the way this is being contrived and manipulated. And that's what we look to you for that clarity, and I still, I'm going to vote my conscience. I respect the word Councilman Cardenas is trying to achieve, and I respect your reputation. I worked with you for many, many years, but I also know that we need to start thinking more objectively of how we leverage what we have to gain that greater good for the sake of the city. And, um, so I applaud my colleague for pushing this despite the inaccuracies of the media.
Mr. Cardenas?
Yes, thank you. I'm going to try to make this short. We belabored many, many things here, and unfortunately, there's very inaccurate, uh, way in which certain things are asked and certain answers are given accurately. I don't want to get involved in that anymore. But one thing that I want to say, Mr. Reyes, if anybody feels like this is a difficult decision, believe me, with all due respect, Mr. Fujioka, now this is a bigger decision on me, because my name, my name has been brought through the press, not yours. My name, I'm on the hook for being accused of potentially losing money for the city. And let me be, be perfectly clear, the real question to anybody in this industry is, by a competitive basis or a negotiated basis, is it accurate to say that one way you're going to gain money, or another way you're going to lose money? I'll answer it myself. You can't answer that question. It is yes and no. That's the truth. We could gain more money a certain way, or preserve more money, is more accurate of saying it, or go out up to the market and it'll be higher or lower a certain day, competitive or negotiated. So the bottom line is, there is no answer to that question that is true or false. But one thing that I understand enough about what we're doing here, at least Mr. Fujioka did clarify, today is a day to move on. They wrote the language, the language was written, the motion is before us, they feel comfortable and confident that the entire parameter is taken into account, let's do this, let's move forward. And guess what, ladies and gentlemen? If things go a little sour, Tony Cardenas is going to be the first one that they're going to try to trounce in the press, in these chambers, et cetera. I accept that responsibility, because I know, they've done good work, we've done good work, and things are going to turn out well. They're going to be just fine, because by and large, whether we went competitive or negotiated, the market's going to tell us on the day that we sell, what we get and what we don't get. And believe it or not, there's nothing we can control about that in these chambers. That is up to the market. But we have brought it to this point. Once again, thank you for all of your good work. I hope, members, let's vote on this. Mr. Fujioka said let's move forward, let's move forward.
One last thing, we also need to adopt the, um, the underwriter, uh, underwriters we identified to a process we just went through, we, we gave you, we have that list?
No, we have an oral report, which is that we did go, I'm sorry, if we did go out for a request for information with the six underwriters on the DWP qualified list of underwriters, and the committee consisted of the CLA, the CAO, the harbor, and the airport. And the, the, the committee is making a recommendation for your adoption to choose, um, De La Rosa as the senior co-manager, as the bookrunner, as Sebert, Branford, and Schenk as the co-senior manager, Lehman Brothers and Merrill Lynch as the co-managers, with, uh, 20% each. And we hope that you accept this recommendation so we can move forward. And secondly, um, we do ask that you adopt a motion, which I believe is 59A, which will make the findings that are necessary for, uh, the city attorney and bond counsel to go forward with the bond sale. Thank you.
I, I wholeheartedly support that, and I look forward to the vote. Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, that's the end of the speaker queue.
I'm sorry, I formally moved the, the, uh, recommendation.
Okay, as before us. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, uh, let's go back now to public comment, that there's no other ordinances that are, uh, out there, right?
No, all ordinances have been taken care of.
All right. Um, and again, I want to thank the public for their patience today with a, a number of items that were for public comment, as well as, uh, items requiring a quorum before us. I'd like to ask Samuel Spurling to come forward as our first speaker. You have two minutes. Welcome, sir.
Oh, I have a, a handout.
We'll make sure the sergeant-at-arms gets that. Thank you, sir.
President Garcetti and council members, I'm Samuel M. Spurling, a retired city employee, an active citizen. I'm concerned about human resource management in city service. It's important to note that half the $6.7 billion to be spent in, in City Hall this year, or at City Hall this year, will go for employee salaries and benefits, half of the $6.7 billion. So that suggests that employees are not only our most valuable asset, they're also more our most expensive asset. The problem is, city employees are not well-managed. I spent 27 and a half years here, and I've been retired for 20 years and working pretty closely with City Hall. I, I speak from a wealth of experience when I tell you that city employees are, generally speaking, not well-managed. That means that the cities, that half the city's budget is not well-managed. Unfortunately, human resource mismanagement is now officially embedded in city service. The adopted city budget degrades the Board of Public Works, the Board of Civil Service Commissioners, I'm sorry. It compromises the Board's independence.
Thank you, sir.
It leaves the Board...
I'm sorry, so you, the two, the two-minute clock has expired, but we'll make sure that we look at the, uh, item that you gave to the sergeant-at-arms. Excuse me, Mr. Spurling? That's, there's two minutes per speaker, that's why we have the clock right there, but we'll make sure we take a look at what you've handed out to us as well, and we thank you for your time. Thank you. Thank you. We'll make sure the sergeant-at-arms gets it. We'll make sure the sergeant-at-arms gets it. Our next speaker is Steve Diaz. Is Steve Diaz here? Barbara Rowe. Dorothy Mendez. James Upshaw. David Hernandez. Arnold Sachs.
Good afternoon, thank you very much. I'd just like to congratulate the council for manipulating their agenda today to take care of, I guess, important business while we had a full house. And then, when item 14 was off the calendar, everybody kind of left. But it brings back some questions regarding rules in front of the council. Last week, there was an item, actually, it was this item that we just, you just finished with regarding the debt bond hearing. And it said, "If public hearing is not held in committee, an opportunity for public comments will be provided." Is it my understanding that these items are in hearings in committees? But if they're not on the agenda, then there won't be any public hearing? Or there won't be any public comment on them? Or public comment in general in a committee meeting? If it regards something totally different, is that included as public comment on this item? The reason I'm asking that is that if this item is held and heard in front of the committee or the council, then it won't be heard in front of the committee. Am I wrong or right on that? And if it's not heard in front of the committee, then there will be no public comment on it. And if there's no public comment in the committee, then there'll be no public comment in the council, which will effectively mean there's no public comment on the item at all. Is that ethically correct? Or is that, is that the way the rules are? Am I understanding this correctly? I'd just like to have that clarified for my own benefit. And also, on that same meeting, there was an item that called for 12 votes. A 12- urgency clause. Could you?
Sir, thank you. Time is up. I'm not sure exactly what you're asking, but everything either under the Brown Act has a public hearing in committee or here, if somebody introduces a special motion, which can sometimes come under our rule number 16 or 23 in a more timely fashion outside of committee, that also is under the Brown Act. And if anybody fills out any cards, that would have a public hearing. Okay. Our next speaker is Brian Zolin. Frank Lee. David Bush.
Good afternoon, City Council. My name is David Bush. I'm a homeless person. And I'm here today during the public comment period, because I didn't get a chance in the limited time that was allowed yesterday for public comment on the ordinance and the issues surrounding it. But there was something that I heard that I thought was very important. And that was Councilman Rosendahl's observation that homelessness at its root is bigger than a problem in LA. It's bigger than a problem in the county. It's bigger than a problem in the United States. Fact is, one in six persons on this planet is homeless. We just had an election where the American public spoke out en masse that they disagree massively with the priorities of this nation and its military spending. And as you, as you move forward and you consider this ordinance and the impact that it's had on the city, don't let the impact, don't let the consideration of the ordinance and how to recraft the ordinance obscure the fact that really the primary consideration you should be looking at right now are the people that are being impacted by that ordinance. And right now, today, nothing came up hardly yesterday on this subject. And the public has been diverted into a discussion about the ordinance when the city of LA is engaged in the most massive arrests of homeless people and sweeping them into the jails. There was a massive publicity push that got international attention from the chief of police of LA and at the, with the support of the councilwoman Jan Perry for the alleged dumping by local hospitals of five people on Skid Row. We've dumped over 500 people in the county jail.
Thank you, sir. That's two minutes, thank you very much. Our next speaker is Garcia Taylor. Garcia Taylor here? Joseph Thomas? Oh, Ms. Taylor's here, okay. I'm sorry, Ms. Taylor, you're next. No problem, you take your time. We'll make sure you get up there. And you have two minutes to address the public. Welcome to City Council, ma'am. And thank you for your patience today.
Good afternoon, City Councilmen and women and women. I noticed that Mr. Reyes and Mr. Rosendahl are very attentive. Well, it's Mr. Parks, well, don't leave him out. But that is a shame that these people come in before you. You know, men comes in all kinds of ways, rich and poor looking. Some spiritualized and some is not spiritualized.
Can you get a little closer to the microphone, ma'am? Because we can't quite. Thank you.
Be careful of how you treat people. You know, just because a person is dirty, you tell him to sit in a bad seat. There was a form in here when I first came in. And this form was all here to hear mostly Latino. Latinos don't have to worry. I'm a light woman. I'm worried. You know why? I've been coming down here since the Browns and before them, the lady that was the city count, she was the president down here. I am a mother. I am a working mother. I'm a single mother. I have sons that's missing right here in Los Angeles, California. I have pictures that I would like to present to the City Council Board of Jan Hahn, my son's father, just a veteran who's gone on, and my leg that, when I got drugged on the MTA bus. I haven't promised a house so many times. But I'm going to tell you something, when you go in those churches and, oh, hallelujah! Please remember this. Jesus said, "Foxes has den, chicken has hooves, and a man had nowhere to lay his head." You understand? You got to stand before the main one, and that's Jesus and God. When he shook New Orleans, huh, he shook New York City. I don't care who you are, sweetheart, you got to stand before the main one.
Thank you very much, Ms. Taylor. Joseph Thomas, if you'd like to give the photographs, we'll make sure one of the sergeants-at-arms gets them. Thank you. Joseph Thomas is our next speaker. Is Joseph Thomas here? Not then, Zuma Dog? Mr. Dog? Excuse me.
All right, now Eric Garcetti, he told me I couldn't read the paper. He had the police tell me I couldn't read the newspaper when I was sitting down. I think I know why he didn't want me to read it, because Daily News headline, "Ethics Commissioner Says Prop Our Hertz Regulation." I just think the public was sold a bill of goods, and it will make it more difficult for us to regulate lobbyists in the city. Ethics Commissioner Bill Boyarsky, we should make him Ethics Committee President for those words. And Zuma Dog tells you, I get a whole lot of credibility now, because I've been talking for months and months about this, an unethical ethics bill. And it continues. And we have David Hernandez, who'll be filing a lawsuit on Tuesday to get it taken off altogether. The election won't count because it's unconstitutional. And yeah, yeah, read the Daily News, excellent journalism, y'all! We got something else to talk about. $2.7 million for dog food. Maybe you heard Doug McIntyre on KABC with Zuma Dog and Councilman Zine. We were both on the show as featured speakers. We, I'm going to do the city a favor. People did not know the Rocky Del Gadeo city attorney had photos of the plaintiff doing things that I can't even describe to people on this TV. So he withheld those photos. He did not give it to City Council. City Council made a decision without seeing incriminating photos of the plaintiff. And you made a decision on it. So Zuma Dog, public advocate, I'm going to swoop in and on the behalf of City Council, put in a writ of prohibition to hopefully take this off of Rocky Del Gadeo's desk and put it on the Attorney General's desk, also to put an injunction on this money. Because I say in the future, we have to stand up. We might lose this one. But if people know that they have to fight this in court, they didn't even, by the way, I want the people to know, this $2.7 million guy with dog food, he didn't even file a lawsuit. He just called up Rocky Del Gadeo and said, "I'm going to make a lawsuit if you don't pay me $2.7 million, because I had a little bit of dog food in my spaghetti." If you make them litigate and go the distance, that will shake out the frivolous people that are holding the city hostage. It's litigious extortion. Zuma Dog will be filing a writ of prohibition to put this on the Attorney General's office and put the money back in the citizen. Zuma Dog for City Council.
Sylvia Lynn Hawkins is our next speaker. Noel Weiss.
Councilmembers, good afternoon. Mr. Garcetti, there was item 15, which was, I guess, a receive and file on Mr. Zine's tenant relocation motion. For some reason, I guess, that ended up getting received and filed without, and I had put in a card on that. Apparently, Ms. Grule had asked that that be done. But that's okay, that's okay. Because now, well, it was a receive and file basically on the tenant relocation monies. No, well, well, 15 is a bit, well, then, net-net, bottom line is, where we're at is, the, it's now Mr. Wesson, it's now Ms. Grule, because it's your motion, basically, on all of these items relative to the tenant relocation monies. And I'm hoping that we can get specific dollars. Whether or not you agree with one dollar or another, we really do honestly need a debate on this issue. And we need, and the only way we can get a debate is have the opportunity to debate numbers. I don't think it's reasonable at this point that any of the numbers are right. On Aqua Vista in Ms. Grule's district, right now, they're offering out of the box $5,100 and $12,000, just out of the box. Why? Because they found a way around what Mr. Wesson and what the council just passed. And you know what that way around it is? They're paying a little bit more money, and then they're having the tenants waive all of their Ellis Act rights that you guys just gave them. So this is the game that they're being played. And they're using these low numbers to try to justify extracting a little bit more and extorting even, and basically putting the tenants in a position where take it or give it up. And that's not right either. So the fact that these numbers are so low, it makes it all the more important that the council act on it, raise it to whatever you guys feel fair. You just took care of the hotel workers today. Everything that was said is identical. These people rent, they, they have these expenses. It is critically important that we have this debate. We have it sooner than later, because the system is so dysfunctional, it puts people under needless anxiety. Ms. Grule's people, people all over the city. It shouldn't have to be. And, you know, my hope and expectation is that we can basically get this done sooner than later. And I look forward to working with Ms. Grule and Mr. Wesson to accomplish that, short of the 90 and 20 motion, or 9 and 20 solution that I wish somebody else would sign. But.
Michael Hunt is our next speaker.
I'm with the guy that ate the dog food. I've been arrested 25 times. That's considered dog food when you go to jail for my lawsuit filed in federal court against public expression. We're waiting for the decision to come back. Bill, you fed me dog food. City Council, you fed me dog food. You violated my civil rights. Even my colored folks didn't even stand up for me when it was time to stand up. You know, that's really, really dramatic when your colored folks just sit there and just say, "Well, you know, we're going to let your civil rights be violated." You know, it's, it's still going on today, you know. I think, Mr. President, you hijacked a public comment at the beginning of the meeting because your father was here. You know, I, you know, I think Wednesday's schedule should run as Wednesday's schedule. You know, you hijacked all the people and things like that. But it's still okay. You guys hijack a lot of things. You guys get sued for a lot of things. I'm glad to see the guy get $2.7 million for eating dog food. I just want to know what I'm going to get, you know, for being arrested 25 times for working in the city's pen, feeding meat dog food. You know, hey, it's part of life, you know. Dr. King said, "I seen what was on the other side of the mountain." So I, you know, I have nothing to worry about, you know. I ain't afraid of you guys neither nor. You guys put on your leg, one leg at a time, just like me. So, you know, it's just like, you know, we just want to see when the lawsuit come back to see if you violated my civil rights. And as, and as an individual, if you did, if all of you guys going to apologize. You know, like I said, I've been over the mountaintop. I seen, I seen, like Dr. King said, I seen what was, what was there. And, you know, it's, I'm not afraid.
Thank you very much. Just to correct an inaccurate statement that was made, we had over 100 people here that asked for something to be taken out of order. And that's why we had that. And I know there's been attacks on people's sons in here recently and now on people's fathers. But just wanted to make sure that that record was corrected. We have Mr. Brown next. Mr. Dowd, are you Mr. Brown?
Yeah.
Okay, well, then we will consolidate these two cards. Matt Dowd is our next speaker.
Absolutely. Okay, I'm horrified and appalled. In fact, I'm shocked at the way you treated the public here today. You had homeless activists, three hours they waited. Now yous are all getting paid $70 an hour. You've made, in fact, $71, you made $213 already. These guys all left. Now, I've seen all the bullshit that you talk, bad eyes about letting the public.
You're disrupting the meeting, sir, with those comments. I will make you one last warning, but please do not be disruptive per our code of conduct. No, no, sir, you can continue now.
Okay, I want to correct what went down here yesterday with the condo conversion. Jack Weiss was all puzzled. He didn't know whether it was applied or not. But you know what they did? They made it easy to approve them, and it was difficult to deny. So that's what they did. They just, the rule, the law was there. And then you sneak one through right before you pass that ordinance. Oh, let's just kick one more through, okay? Council District 12 and 8, they're in the good books today. They actually said something good. Where is the financial analysis of that Century Boulevard thing? Just like Venice Boardwalk. I never saw a financial analysis of those businesses down there, how they were going to get affected with the compelling interest to get the vendors off the boardwalk. And here it is, Carol Sobel lawsuit filed in federal court. Boy, when that comes down, you know you're not going to hear the end of it from us. Business tax, why can't you just give them a business tax reduction on the boardwalk? Save all of this, all of the, you know, look, we're not going away, are we? Look, we sat through all this crap. Can I say that? See, Channel 35, I'm calling that the channel of lies, because Pope Joy gets up there on Weekend Review and says, "Oh, yeah, we invite the public down for public comment, but they edited me in the police commission yesterday." And that's fucking bullshit.
Please throw Mr. Dowd out of the chambers for being disruptive. Sir, we would ask you to please be respectful in the way that you address the public. Thank you very much. Mr. Dowd, please leave the chambers. Thank you very much. That closes our public comment for today. And always vigorous as per the Brown Act. But we have closed public comment for today, and now it takes us back to the agenda. Next item, please.
Item 36 was called special for a card from the public.
Before, before we go to the card from public, I do want to take this opportunity to, I know he's feeling a little bit under the weather, but I want to wish a belated happy birthday to Councilmember Herb Wesson, who celebrated his birthday last week. We have a cake for Mr. Wesson that we will be delivering to his office. I know that he's feeling a little under the weather, so we will keep it from here, but we'll make sure that that's in your office. And congratulations, Mr. Wesson. We have a card from the public on number 36. Is there Mr. Smith, David Smith? I believe that was Mr. Dowd. He has been moved. Number 36, if we can vote on number 36, please. Open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay, that is approved. Next item, please.
Item 37 was called special for a card from the public.
Is there Mr. Thorpe here? I believe that was Mr. Dowd as well. So we'll close the public hearing on that. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
Item 45 was called special for a card from the public.
All right, is there David Smith here? Seeing no Mr. Smith, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
Item 46 called special by Councilmember Smith.
Mr. Smith, number 46.
My question's been answered, but I just wanted to go on record saying we still don't have a policy on these street fairs. And I'm going to start asking questions about it, because I'm not going to vote to give away money to professionally run street fairs. And so I'm going to vote for this one today. Mr. Wesson assured me that is not the case here, but.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Let's open the roll on that item, then. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 47 called special by Councilmember Smith, and there is a card on that.
Okay, is there Tony Smith out there? Seeing not, we'll pass on that. Zuma Dog?
Oh, my goodness, here we go.
Hold on one second, Mr. Dog. And I ask you if you can, per our council rules, please keep your voice so that it's not disruptive level. Colleagues, we are going to be continuing the closed session items after this. The city attorney's office has informed us that like those to be carried over. So, until. until Tuesday. So this will be our last item after this, okay? Please, Mr. Dog, go ahead.
Can you reset the clock, please?
Go ahead, Mr. Dog.
Can you reset the clock?
Go ahead, Mr. Dog.
No, no, you gotta restart the clock. Hey, man, I want that clock restarted, okay? Listen, man, that clock, you started it.
Sir, please continue. You spoke some of the time.
I said one word, and you said, "Quiet down." Hey, man, check the tape. We're gonna check the tape, and everyone's gonna see how unethical Eric Garcetti is, and how shady...
Please, Mr. Dog, if you'd like to address this item, please do so at this time.
We just got done batting down Proposition H, you call it preparation H, a billion-dollar bond. I just got done swatting that down. It lost by 4% margin of error. I say that's the Zuma Dog factor. Now they got $1.5 billion for infrastructure, and I'm all for the infrastructure. I'm all for beefing up the infrastructure. We need it. However, again, with these bonds, unaccounted-for money. The money gets diverted, it's non-transparent, and again, why don't we pay for the road repairs? Okay, I would like to say we need extra money, because these roads were built a long time ago. We didn't have any idea there'd be this many cars. So yes, we need money, but not with this bond. Zuma Dog's here to say, "Put it to a tax hike." You're not gonna believe I said that. The problem is, the mayor knows people vote no on taxes and yes on bonds. If you look at the last election, the 86, 87 tax guy voted no, but the, I mean, they know that people will vote yes for a bond more, because they think it's like a credit card. They don't see it come out of their check every week, but damn it, I was just about to take a vacation till January, because Proposition H lost. Now I walk in here a week later, you got a new one that's gonna be put for a vote of the people.
Sir, could you please, we want to hear what you say, but please, if you reduce the volume, we can hear you better.
Oh, you're interrupting me more. Give me some more time. Just tell them to turn the microphone down there. Just tell them to turn the microphone down. Aw, man, both of us, dude, they decided to run the ballot again.
Thank you. Close our public comment. Mr. Smith.
Wow! I gotta turn up my volume. I didn't just talk loud enough. Very briefly, members of council, this is late in the afternoon. Mr. Cardinals, I have had discussions with the mayor and other leaders of the city, and we believe it's in the best interest to go ahead and ask that this be sent to the city attorney for drafting, that we hold it back for the 2008 ballot, for the very purpose that Mr. Dog just brought up in a way, is that we can straighten out the people so they understand it, rather than going off without understanding what he's talking about. But that we would have the opportunity to take it out to the public, tell them what it's all about, so they understand the difference between a bond and a tax or anything else, and just have a good public intercourse on this issue, discourse on this issue, and that's what we want to do. So we're asking you that we pass it today, instruct the city attorney to draft language, but only bring it back for the 2008 ballot.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith.
Is there a second on that?
Yes, second. Mr. Rosendahl is our next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Go ahead, Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Rosendahl?
Yes, Mr. President, thank you.
The camera's on you and the microphone's on you.
I want to thank Mr. Smith for this motion, and obviously, I second the motion. We will, in Public Works...
Look at this, people, TV 35, what did I do? Look at this.
Go ahead, Mr. Rosendahl, though.
I've had complaints, oh, he's squeezing the brakes a way too tight. He squeezed, cut them up, and circulated, tell them to stop.
Sir, please leave the chambers.
He squeezed, let go of my hand, and he squeezed it way too tight.
For the record, they're just escorting him out gently.
As we had a clear disruption of the meeting, as we regularly ask Sergeant-at-Arms when folks have been disruptive and no longer continue the business of the meeting, we did have to remove an individual. Those individuals do sometimes come back as well, and they have the right to speak, but not to disrupt the meeting. Please go ahead, Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, what Mr. Smith has done is a very sensible move. The Committee on Public Works will vet this, will work it through the 15 districts, will get everybody to appreciate that this is in the city's infrastructure-best interest, and '08 will be a perfect timing to do it. So I want to thank Greg Smith for his leadership on putting it in front of us, and I look forward to very robust discussions over the next 18 months, and I obviously look forward to the November ballot with this on it, and obviously, I want the people to support it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Mr. Zine is our next speaker.
Mr. Smith, you know that I'm concerned about the roads along with you. When you look at 4,000 miles, we have Prop C funds that cover the transit routes. Is this for our residential streets, for the streets that in 50 years never get paved? And how many miles do we have if you start adding those up citywide?
The city of L.A. has about 7,000 miles. There's about 4,000 miles that are in the category of C-minus or D/F category, as far as grading of how bad they are. So 4,000 miles need to be brought up to an A or B level, and that's what this project would do. Within 10-year period of time, we'd take up all of our streets to A and B, and then present a plan that will maintain them afterwards.
So in addition to the major quarters that we use regularly, maintain with the funds that are already in the gas tax, this will be for the residential streets that seldom get served. Thank you.
That is our last speaker on the queue. Anybody else wishing to be heard? If not, as amended, let's open the roll. On the item, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
All right, that is approved. Any other business we have?
Council has motions for posting a referral.
Has it posted and referred?
That clears the desk.
All right, any announcements, colleagues? Ms. Gruehl?
To announce that the Transportation Committee will start at 2:10.
All right, any other announcements? Mr. Labange?
We're asked that we all join and await your signature. Send a special salute to President Ford, who is now the oldest living president in our history of this great country, so I'm gonna ask Becky and the team down in Creative Services to present a commendation. We'll ask the mayor to sign it as well, and wish he and his family well.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. So there are announcements, colleagues. Yes, Mr. Parks?
I have a couple announcements. One, the Expo Construction Authority is having their Midline Community Meeting on Thursday, November 16th, Dorsey High School, between 6:30 and 8:30. Also, on November 17th, the district is hosting their annual State of the Eighth, where we'll honor and highlight students from the elementary, middle, and high school, and also neighborhood councils and block clubs. And then also on the, let's see, one other one. Also on Saturday, November 18th, at 8:00 to 3:00 p.m., 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., at David Starr Jordan High School on Atlantic Boulevard in Long Beach, they will be having the Fifth Annual Education Symposium College Expo. And then also the ongoing, regular monthly meeting of the, let's see, what is it? The Urban Roundtable with Afari Hutchinson will be meeting on Saturday, November 18th, at Lucy Florence for their monthly roundtable and discussion about community events, and that's at 10 a.m.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. Any other announcements, colleagues? Does anybody have adjourning motions for today? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardinals, Gruehl, Hanwes, Labange, Padilla, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti.